You go have some, um, what is the no for crab cakes?
Had one yesterday. Yes, tonight I had, we had ramen, we ordered in ramen, because I didn't wanna. Be, I wasn't sure when the meeting would be over or anything, so we got settled in and. Made sure I had a good wifi connection and. Yeah. That's sad, this, you know, it's kinda nice that we can do this.
Yes, yes, you coming back this weekend or?
Um, might be heading back tomorrow, might be coming back, we've gotta be back by four thirty on Sunday. That's, that's the only thing said. So.
Well, good, safe travels, because you gotta get on the Baltimore loop and DC loop for a bit, so just be careful.
Oh, no, we've been taking like, we've been on eleven a lot or fifteen. Now, I've been. Refusing to get on the major highways. So, saw a lot of, a lot of houses without any setbacks, which were adorable. It's, it's very different what I look at now, when I'm, when I'm driving around, it's like, see this little town, it's really cute, there's no setback, it's right up on the sidewalk.
So I missed something, where are you calling in from?
Uh, we landed in Baltimore.
Aha.
So, we, you know, we've been just rolling a die and kind of. Turning left, it took us four hours to get to Culpeper on Tuesday. Drove all around Somerset.
Oh, it's nice here.
Took two thirty, ended up taking two thirty-one over the mountain, ended up on some gravel road, crossing over the Blue Ridge Mountains on a gravel road. Finding these gorgeous little white flowers that I've never seen before, growing in the forest.
We still have another minute or two here.
Tell you Frederick Maryland is a very cute little place. We were gonna go to, we ended up very close to Fallen Waters, and we're gonna go there. Um, the Frank Lloyd Wright House.
Yeah, I've been there.
So rainy today, that it just kinda what, we were just like, yeah, we'll come back another time, because I wanna see the grounds too.
Okay, it looks like we've got all of our counselors here, Mr. Rogers, you got everybody you need? You're muted, I take it that's a yes?
Sam Astley, Lisa. Are you on? Okay.
Here as well.
Chrissy?
I'm here.
Okay, very good, we're ready, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, unfortunately, I had just started printing something, and my printer is gonna buzz at us for the next thirty seconds or so. Uh, that notwithstanding, we are ready to call to order this six o'clock budget. I saw it optimistically referred to as the budget wrap-up meeting. Let's, let's keep that thought in mind. Yeah, I, I, I wanted to sort of start off by saying we, to, to, for the benefit of folks who have not seen what we've been up to. Uh, the city manager had circulated a spreadsheet that we were able to. Uh, feedback to the city manager, what our, our thoughts were on the various decision points that we had. Had to, to confront tonight. That is all set against a backdrop that I wanted to just sketch out for folks who are. Tuning in, who perhaps may not have, have been obsessing over this as much as some of the rest of us have, but. One of the things that happened, uh, last week was that we learned that if we consider the expected surplus. Coming out of the twenty twenty-two fiscal year, the year that ends June thirtieth. We will have enough revenue to fund the city manager's budget for FY twenty twenty-three. By keeping all of our present tax rates the same, so we had advertised the possibility of an increase in real estate taxes, for example. Or meals taxes, uh, we would not need to do that, and we would still be able to fund. Uh, what the city manager has, has suggested, terms of expenses. We would be able to fund certain new expenditures without raising tax rates, there are a few. That have been suggested by people that might raise, might cause expenditures to rise above the revenues. Uh, these would fall, in many cases, fall into the category of, we're waiting for a plan. And one of the decision points that I think we will need to make tonight is, are some of these. Things where we ought to say, we're, we're, we're waiting for a plan, but we have enough in mind that we think we can at least. Put a ballpark figure on it, and let's figure out a plan to, to, to work to that figure, or, or something like that, so that we're not simply saying. Uh, we're, you know, we're not gonna be saying, we don't have any idea what we're going to do, for example, about our unhoused population. Or about, uh, potential expansion of the transit system, these are things we've been talking about. To some extent, so those are things that we may end up talking about, that, that don't really have a fixed number attached to them right now. One of the questions that people have asked a number of times since we started having this conversation last week. And where it looked like we would have enough money without raising taxes. Has been, well, if that's the case, why the heck did you scare us all to death with this new? Ten cent tax increase and, and all the rest of that, and I will say. That there are a couple of things that are a little bit different about the way we've handled this. One of the ways that we, that's different is that we typically have not, uh, tried to factor into our thinking. A surplus that we expect at, at, in the fiscal year that we're presently in. That surplus has typically not been known until December or January. Uh, but in this particular case, our surplus is first of all, significantly larger than we have had in years past. And second, we can look with some certainty and, and feel pretty good. That at least most of that is gonna be real surplus, now you never wanna catch chickens for you, for the hatch. But maybe some of these chickens are, 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 are close enough to being hatched, remember, we're three quarters of the year through the fiscal. Three quarters of the way through the fiscal year, so we have, we deviated from sort of our standard practice. In part because if we didn't, and we made some very difficult and perhaps traumatic financial choices right now. And then in December, we're told, oh, by the way, you have twelve million dollars more. People would justifiably be saying, what's wrong with you guys, why weren't you thinking about that back in? Back in March and April, so I was glad that we deviated in this game, most of the time, we're talking about a surplus of three million dollars or four million dollars. Uh, but a surplus of potentially of twelve million dollars is worth changing procedures for. So the consequence is, we've got, uh, we've all been working with, uh, sort of a spreadsheet that, uh. Gives us a whole bunch of choices, and I'm hoping that we will go through those choices this evening. Uh, and just kinda see where everybody is, and see what, what, getting a majority vote, and where we. Where we end up, and then at the end of that, we can see kinda where the surplus looks like, and what, what, you know, what sort of tax rates. Would be necessary to accommodate the, the things that we're talking about, does that sound like a reasonable way to be approaching things? Okay, now, um, with that preface. Uh, Ms. Hamel, are you leading this thing off for us, Mr. Rogers, who's, who's going first here?
Yeah, we, 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 we're sharing, Chrissy, put up the, the PowerPoint through the first slide, then we'll get, then you can do the rest. Mr. Mayor, just to, uh, set the table. Uh, the city manager submitted a budget on March seventh. That, uh, for two hundred and sixteen million, one hundred and seventy-one, uh, thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars. Uh, that revenue basis was, uh, contemplated, a, a, uh. Ten cent in key, increase in, uh, real estate taxes, but we did not allocate. Uh, those funds, as you recall, but with the, the nine point two million dollars. Of, uh, real estate taxes included, increase included, that took us to sixteen million dollars. Now. Uh, with, uh, uh, not going forward with nine point two. We look at, we, we back that out of the two sixteen. We back out, uh, uh, new rep, revenue estimates from the Virginia Communications. Uh, sales and use tax based on, uh, uh, the estimates of our, of our finance team. And we look at the increase in, uh, other taxes. Uh, the personal property tax. Uh, the rate remains the same. Uh, but there is a two million dollar bump there, and we talked about that with, with thought. And, uh, diverse, and, uh. We contemplated, you know, some other options, so he had some other recommendations. But if you keep the, uh, the tax rate as it is, that would yield two, two million dollars. There's a projected increase in, uh, utility taxes. Hundred thousand dollars, sales and use tax, nine hundred thousand dollars. Transient room tax, five hundred thousand dollars, and meals taxes, twenty-five thousand, uh, dollars. And licenses and permits, the three hundred thousand dollars. When you add all that up, we, uh, we come up with, uh. A net, uh, reduction from the nine point two. Of, of five million, four hundred and fifty-seven, uh, thousand, one hundred and forty-one. So the general fund budget that we submit to you based on those amendments. Would be two hundred and ten million dollars, seven hundred and fourteen, uh, two ninety-one. That's with no tax increases, and keep in mind, with this, with, with, with this number. We are, uh, uh, funding the, uh, employee raises of three percent effective July one. The retirees of two percent. Uh, we're funding the school operating budget at their request level of four point two million dollars. Uh, we are including, uh, uh, seven to eight new positions, uh, that would help us enhance our. Capacity administratively. Uh, we are doing some equipment purchases that are much needed. And, uh, in the overall scheme of things, we are, uh, uh, also funding the school reconfiguration project. Through our CIP at a sixty-eight point eight million dollar, uh, level. Uh, and agreed to by the school board as we discussed, uh, earlier, in an earlier meeting. And so that's all with, with, uh. The, uh, uh, no increase in, uh, the real estate taxes. Or other, uh, tax, uh, tax level. So tonight, uh, we'll take a, a look at the CIP, there were, uh, there were. Uh, to discuss last, last weeks of areas that you, uh, were interested in. Uh, and we'll take a look at the bond, just a couple of slides. At, at the, uh, uh, bond allocation, and how that would work out, so Chrissy, you want to skip over to that?
Sure. So this is a slide that we, um, shared with you, I believe, um, last week at the, uh, work session. Um, just wanted to talk through this one more time before we pop up the spreadsheet. Um, to work through some numbers, just to remind everyone where we are, so as Mr. Rogers. Um, indicated, we are looking at, uh, a total of sixty-eight point eight for the school project. Um, that in and of itself, if that's what you decide would be an amendment to the CIP, which would reduce that down from seventy-five to sixty-eight, eight. Um, we talked about two different bonding scenarios, one was with a fifty-four million dollar bond. The other was with fifty, um, and then backing into the difference using either year-end surplus on the city side. Uh, ARP funding from the schools, and then some other type of cash, um, source to get you to that total. Uh, you see those listed there, in the fifty-four million dollar scenario, we're at fourteen point eight million dollars of other funds. And in the fifty million dollar scenario, we're at eighteen point eight. Um, we also presented you with two different ways to, um, look at affording that. One would be, um, using an incremental increase in your debt service transfer with the equivalent of either one point nine. Or one point eight, um, depending on which scenario, over three years. Um, so for three years, we would be increasing the debt service transfer by that much, three years in a row. Um, or the other possible option was to look at a one-time tax increase. Um, that would be equivalent to five, five and a half, or five and a quarters worth. Um, on the tax rate, and, uh, put that in the debt service fund all at one time upfront. And so, um, we just wanted to, before we skip over to the infamous spreadsheet. Um, make sure we ran back through those numbers to see if anybody had any questions or any clarification you needed on that.
Uh, hi, Ms. Hamel, thank you again, so, just. Checking one last time, so the annual incremental debt service, that's one point nine five, one year, second year, third year.
Correct. So I think if I'm remembering the numbers correctly, we'll be going from, um, just over twelve million. Um, up to seventeen million, and then we sort of plateau, uh, at that point.
And the other way to get there, you're saying, is to do a, a single tax increase, in the case of the fifty-four million scenario of. Five and a half cents, which would be a lump sum of five point one million.
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Any further questions on that? Okay, the only other thing I wanted to just, um, this, again, this was a slide from last week as well, these were a couple other scenarios that we talked about. Um, with regard to the CIP, the school one, we just talked about. Uh, Stribling Meadow Creek and the PHA projects, all of those were projects that we've spoken about and heard from you all with some interest. Um, Stribling and PHA are both sort of in the twenty twenty-five year range. Um, we suggested with the Stribling, uh, project, there is, um, uh, money from the developer as well as some city money. Um, and then PHA, we also provided you with some, um, suggestions, which we'll talk about when we get to the spreadsheet, but again. Those, um, while they are important, um, they won't have a direct impact on twenty-three per se. Um, and so if there's nothing else here, then we'll just, if everybody's in agreement, we can go ahead and, um. Bring up the spreadsheet and start.
So I'm sorry, quickly, before you move on, I just want to make sure that I understand this, um, so. Those projects, because they're, you know, a few years down the road, won't, uh, won't have an impact on twenty-three budgets, so. It's possible, like for those transportation projects that we may have some, once the audit. Is done, some excess money in December of this year. Am I understanding that correctly, if, you know, everything lines up, and is it possible that at that point, I guess for. Next year's budget, that we could allocate some of those funds for these projects and maybe others, or? Is that, you know, is that not? You know, kosher with, um, you know, how to use these monies and things, so.
No, I think you're thinking about that correctly, um. I guess my point with that is that it doesn't have an impact on twenty-three, is that when we're talking about the three point seven million that Mr. Rogers referenced. As, uh, potential amendments to the twenty-three budget, uh, because there's not a cash outlay required for any of these in twenty-three. That those are things that are probably better suited for decisions down the road. Um, and certainly we could add them to, if you're interested, we should add them to the CIP plan in twenty twenty-five. For this year, but it's not a dollar amount that needs to be assigned from that amendment, from the three point seven amendments that we're gonna talk about.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna stop sharing this screen and, um, bring up the spreadsheet. Can everybody see that?
Yep.
So just a couple of things before we get started, just some mechanics of how this works. Um, so again, as we talk about these columns, when would council actually be making the approval? Uh, or the, um, decision to do this? Anything that's gonna, that we talk about with the twenty-three amendments, that's gonna be what you're gonna adopt with the budget ordinance next Tuesday. On the twelfth. The CIP contingency, that's something you can approve at any time, tonight, next week, next year, whenever. Um, the last column D, again, that's our projected surplus for twenty-two. And that's something that won't actually come to you officially, and won't be an official decision until sometime in the November, December timeframe. So as of right now, um, the number that is here, this three point seven five. Is, uh, the new revenues that Mr. Rogers just highlighted with you, again, it assumes that you do not change the personal property tax rate. As recommended by the commissioner. Um, if you were to change that, that will change this number, or if you change any, if you decide to make any other tax changes. That could change this number. Um, and then as we start putting numbers in this column, and you can see there's already numbers in there. This number in yellow will start to buy down your, your balance, so it's just a way for us to keep track of where we are. Same thing for the contingency, that's currently a balance of eleven point four. That's money that has built up from, uh, basically the twenty and twenty-one surplus. Um, that, that account gets replenished every year, if there is a surplus in excess of our seventeen percent policy. Our policy says that goes here, so this always has the potential to grow. Um, and then the surplus, as, uh, the mayor referenced, will be part of our year-end closeout, that will, Mr. Cullen will be presenting in. November, December. And so with that, Mr. Rogers, were you gonna take over from here?
Uh, you can, you can walk through it.
Okay, so I don't know, um, do you all have a preference of which section you wanna start in? Do we wanna talk about things that are already filled in, or how would you like to go through this?
Mayor?
I, I was thinking we would go through, uh, the expenditure items, particularly the ones we've already. Uh, got filled in as expected for FY twenty twenty-three, and just see where that, where that gets us.
Okay. So I'll pop down, um, anything that's in blue and in italics. These were items that were recommendations of the city manager's office, um, and they were things that we showed to you last week. Um, again, these are at your discretion, um, but they are, have been calculated in this total. So, um, there were two changes to agencies that was basically just a housekeeping item between, to correct. A difference between the actual scoring and reporting with the vibrant community report, and what was actually in the budget. Um, the housing coordinator position upgrade. Was one that Mr. Sanders talked to you about, there was the recommendation for funding, to restore funding to a buyer in procurement. And there was the need to replace, um. At least one vehicle, uh, in the sheriff's office, normally this would be a one-time expenditure, but the reason we put it in this column. Is that, um, in response to COVID, vehicle replacement was an area that we've really sort of cut back. Um, and so adding this back to the base, even though we're gonna use it for sheriff this year, seems appropriate, because we will need to continue to fund those vehicle replacements. Um, moving, yes ma'am?
One thing, one question I have is. Where, where is Ryan's position, was, is that still in the budget?
It is.
Okay, so it's funded, it's just, we have to work on hiring it.
Correct.
About having another budget office person, that's in addition to Ryan's vacant position?
That's right, so right now, we are in office of two. Um, when we hire Ryan's position, that would give us an, so we have a systems analyst, myself. That's it, at the moment, um, Ryan's position would give us another budget analyst. Um, and then the item that's listed on here would be for the third.
Ms. Hamel, I, I don't have any issues with the city manager amendments, uh, rows forty through forty-four.
Okay, anyone else, do we need to go through those, or is everybody good with those?
I'm fine with them.
Okay.
Uh, we, Michael or Cena, are, y'all cool with those?
Yes.
Just out of curiosity, why was Festival of Cultures cut back some?
Um, it was a, just a difference between what was in the report and what was actually put in the budget. I had gotten a higher number, and, um, it was their, their allotment was actually smaller.
Thank you.
Okay, so forty through forty-four, we're good on.
Okay. Um. So, one-time considerations, again, these were ones that we talked about last year, these are one time kinds of expenses. Which is why the recommendation was, if you were interested in approving those, that they would sort of go in the surplus column. With the exception of the safer grant, um, but the DSS, that's Department of Social Services. Um, we've been notified that their current software system that, uh, processes foster care payments is no longer gonna be supported. And has to be replaced, um, so that, that one fifty would be a one-time cost, there will be some ongoing annual maintenance. But this is sort of the one-time outlay. Um, procurement east sourcing software, that's a similar thing, we've been using a pilot program, um. You know, up until COVID, uh, we were, all of that process was purely manual, and we found out through COVID that. Um, you know, the advancements of a lot of other localities that are doing that online is a very necessity. Uh, or necessary thing, and so we've added that as one time. Two additional buses to increase or decrease the route wait time. Um, for Route Six as an equity initiative was added, and then the safer grant that we've been talking about. Um, this is, while it's not one time, this does sort of, um, help set aside some money. Um, to start phasing in that additional cost in the general fund.
Ms. Hamel, can you remind me what that total safer grant is?
So this, um, the original number that we've been talking about, uh, for the fifteen firefighters was roughly one point nine. I actually, uh, bumped that up to adjust for the mid-year increase and the potential, um, merit that's in this proposed budget. So that's how I got to the two point one. Um, I think the way this works is that, um, and if anybody from the, if the chief is on, or Mr. Rogers. Uh, Mike Rogers from the fire department's on, they can correct me, but I believe that, um, we. The full freight comes on beginning in March of twenty twenty. Four, so that would be three months in, in twenty twenty, FY twenty twenty-three, and then we get the full year. In FY twenty-four, so this would give you, um, some money to definitely cover the, um, costs that are coming on in twenty-three. And also set aside a reserve to help buy down some of the budget increase that will be required in twenty-four.
Okay, and that total in. Michael Payne, you might know, I, I know you've mentioned this, is this the total that we're sort of? We were granted that we've got to figure out how to do the two point one? Okay, all right, great, thank you.
We had got more, but it, we got more, but, so what this number is, it is the salary and benefits of those fifteen firefighters. So the grant originally covered them, I believe it was for three years, um, and then after that, the city picks up the full freight.
Okay, based on what you're saying, I'm good with rows forty-seven through fifty, myself.
How are others feeling about that?
Likewise.
Same. Um.
I appreciate that safer grant, because with, since we also have, there's like three things all at the same time that we're gonna be. Let, in, coming due at the same time, so this will help level some of that out at least.
Okay. So we have a, we have another section, not. Okay, so we have a, we have another section, not to skip the school project, but to just kinda keep this conversation going. If you don't mind, I'm gonna skip down to this internal capacity section because this really speaks more. This is some follow-up from your retreat over the weekend and some things that we talked about during that time. And since it's operational, are you okay if we, we look at this section at this point?
Part because one of the things that it accomplishes is that it helps me reconcile your numbers with mine from two days ago.
Okay. So again, these, some of these, when we first sent the sheet to you, if you recall, they had, there were no numbers attached. These were just ideas that came out of the retreat. Many of you, when you sent your responses back to us, it had, you know, give us a cost, what's the estimate? So we did our best this morning, we took a look at this, and that's why these numbers are in blue, because these are numbers we're providing. So the CAT additional funding, the 30-minute routes, is roughly $2 million. Sam, did you wanna talk about this at all?
Yes, basically, this was the, the conversation that we had in regards to having some funding available for CAT to use as a match to any of the infrastructure and transportation dollars that come. This was a conversation that both God and I have had multiple times about wanting to position CAT in a way that they will be able to respond. And this actually makes it possible for them to have some basic resources that would not necessarily require a mad dash to try to move things around to be able to respond.
Thank you for that. I have not looked in detail through the spreadsheet that was sent, the separate email that came out about CAT that Counselor Payne initiated, I guess. But I'm assuming that this 2 million sort of covers those, those contingencies or the, at least the, the steps we wanna make towards a 30-minute system.
And honestly, it's, it's just a stab at this moment, because again, this would be what we would rely on for the local match dollars that would be required for whatever we're able to secure. We have no way of knowing at this moment what our share of that would potentially be when we would get it. But the, the prudent action that you would be taking by doing this would just ensure that we could respond. That really is the, the priority of this particular item.
So it's basically like a transit fund?
Yes, exactly.
Understood, thank you.
Is 60,000 enough for a tax specialist level one, including benefits and space and?
It is. Mr. Divers is on, and he can correct me if he disagrees.
It's, it's an entry-level position. I mean, you know, competitive salaries are always tough. But it, it's an entry-level position that we desperately need.
I was just making sure it's enough being budgeted to it. I, I mean, I believe you need it, especially with overseeing the chat program and everything. And I know we've talked a number of times about how that takes time. Um, and I just wanted to make sure that that's a realistic figure, that was all.
It's what we've been paying people. I mean, that's a bigger question. You know, happy for it to be more, but right now, we need the position.
If you're good with that number, I'm good with that number.
Yeah, let's, let's get it.
Okay, so another thing we talked about over the weekend at the retreat was the idea of a grants or an intergovernmental specialist. We also had talked about potential of our funding. We haven't really had an opportunity to research that yet with Mr. Cullen, but if we were to add that to the budget as an ongoing position, then roughly, this is what we think the salary and benefits would cost to acquire a person who could do the work that rep, that was what we talked about over, at the retreat. Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, this is amount that was put in, and Ms. Marshall might wanna speak to that.
Sure, so over your sessions in the weekend, there were multiple discussions of equity in many different areas and places and spaces. Prior to this particular moment, there, it was not a line item funding amount for the Office of Equity and Inclusion, which was a office that was really drummed up through a 2019 study that was done and was presented to council. The funding that is allocated there would provide support for team members, including a community health worker. That community health worker would be tasked with providing support for housing navigation specifically for individuals who are unhoused. So that is addressing some of you all's concerns about making sure that we're providing support for our unhoused individuals. Further, as we discussed during your weekend session, it would provide an opportunity for training. Not only training that would be available and open to the community, such as a Racial Equity Institute groundwater training, but also trainings that would include visitable, which is an ADA hospitality training. So we're not learning the nuts and bolts of how many inches you need, it's how to make sure that we're treating our community with excellence. It would include training such as an intersectional allyship for racial justice training, a, another training for exploring racial liberation. All of the trainings I've chosen have deep meaning and would move the organization forward in their thought process and mission for racial equity, diversity, and inclusion. So that is what that funding amount would, would cover is, again, some additional staffing to, to work on those issues specifically unhoused, as well as making sure that we have adequate funding for training supports for our, not only our internal staff, but also to provide service to our community as a whole.
Ms. Marshall, I, I know that you're, you're sort of putting this together. The retreat was just Saturday, so I really appreciate you, you getting this together. Any sense of how many new people would be hired out of this? Two, three?
It has a space for two individuals. The way that it would work would be, again, that community health worker and outreach specialist that would address many of you all's concerns. In addition, I've built it in with the consideration of hiring an individual that would work with the Charlottesville, sorry, my brain just died, Charlottesville Community Care Team, you just witnessed it. And that person would be a self-sufficiency supervisor. Again, that program really focused in on individuals who are unhoused or individuals who are on extremely low incomes and are finding difficulty with navigating services and navigating opportunities. And that really was bolstered, and we'll talk about that a little later in a different presentation. But as you all are aware, you received a petition from individuals who are currently unhoused, requesting support for housing. Those individuals were gracious enough to meet with a group of community members, specifically in homelessness provision. That included our Director of Social Services, as well as our Director for the Office of Human Rights. And one of the things that really came out of it from those members of our community, our neighbors and our friends, is that especially being unhoused, they have a lot of difficulty navigating, navigating their opportunities, remembering a phone number because maybe their bag gets stolen. So they really need that support, and it's something that thankfully our Office of Human Rights, Office of Human Services, and Department of Social Services are already providing without an extra person, without extra hands. This would give them some extra hands because that work is really increased. Also, we know that work is increased through the work that our Home to Hope and Job Center teams are doing.
Excellent, thank you.
Um, Ms. Marshall, I am all for this. I'm not, I'm just, what I'm concerned about is duplication of services. And, and things have, I know things could have changed in recent years, but as I recall, the Haven was supposed to be kind of providing this centralized hub for homelessness, for homelessness services, and for housing navigation.
And that is absolutely correct, and they are still doing excellent work, but like everyone, they're still experiencing the same staffing attrition. And so they really narrowed their focus to making sure they're providing excellent services and excellent care, which does mean that sometimes you will need to pull from running a nonprofit myself, you have to pull back on some other items. So we're not, we absolutely would, I am again, a former nonprofit CEO. I'm never in there to duplicate efforts, but I am really focused on making sure that we're also providing the supports needed for our teams on the ground, working in homelessness in our nonprofit community, who may just simply need an extra hand. So for example, the community care team as a whole, that perspective really came about because Region 10 unfortunately has a hard stop if an individual is not experiencing a mental health crisis. They can still be unhoused, they can still be extremely low income, but their funding is very narrowly focused for their, their expertise, and that makes absolute sense. So what we hope that we're doing is working to provide support in those gaps and holes until perhaps it can be filled in a different way. But until that work can be done, we don't want members of our community to not have access to items and tools that they should have access to, or to not feel as if they have, you know, a helping hand to allow them to move forward. So we would always evaluate whether or not we're duplicating efforts, but what we know now, again, is that, you know, the Silver Tsunami and the Great Resignation has affected everyone from nonprofits to corporates. And so, you know, really just thinking about stepping in to make sure that we're getting those warm connections, those hot handoffs to our experts for them to be able to do it. And quite honestly, loosening up a little bit of time of some of our current staff, like Mr. Niemeyer, to be able to do the work that you all really want him to be doing, but he is absolutely one of the people that would go and give his own tent to an individual. Same thing for our Home to Hope team, they're doing excellent work with individuals who also happen to be unhoused, on extremely low income. But we know that you all want them doing more in their particular level of expertise. So very mindful of duplication of work, none of this would be doing that.
Okay, and so, well, it also does initiate that no wrong door to, and help actually make sure no wrong door to service. That people aren't being delayed, not being able to get to say Pacham, by the time it's actually, by the time intake happens, or.
Right, you're absolutely correct, Councilmember McGill. And no wrong door is something I'm very intimately familiar with. Along with no wrong door, there's also hub models that utilize community health workers. Again, the idea is no wrong door, the idea is providing a hot handoff. So that person would have the time to say, you know what, let me go with you to social services, you know what? Let me go with you to the Haven and introduce you to Ms. Nancy. It's that kind of time that other people probably don't have, but giving that hot handoff to the individual friendly face to another friendly face that's gonna provide that support.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Okay, moving on, so the budget office capacity, this is something that I am grateful for that recommendation that came out of this weekend. We have some exciting stuff we wanna do, and this would certainly provide us with the capacity to do so. This number that is shown here is slightly higher than what we gave to you previously. That's just because we went back and realigned the actual numbers. So that is a slight change from what was on the sheet that you got originally. And then the only other number that we assigned, which I think was actually perhaps an idea from the mayor early on, the idea of a fund or pot of money for the prospective new city manager to be able to have money to actually institute some of his or her ideas upon arrival.
And just to be clear, my thought was not that this is something that the city manager would be able to spend on his or her own initiative without consulting with council. Simply that with consultation with council, there's money there that's unallocated that, that, that the city man, that new city manager could say, this is the direction I wanna be able to go, I wanna be able to go now, not next fiscal year, boom, we're ready.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think it's a great idea. I really like it. I just wondered if half a million would be enough for one fiscal year for that person as opposed to a whole million?
And, and yeah, I, I would agree with, with Counselor Pinkston, and maybe we'll get clarity as we go through the rest of the items. But I would go in through it, this would be the first area I would look to make a reduction from if we're reaching with our other priorities, sort of needing to find money from other areas, but certainly open to the idea, but not settled on that amount.
It is a good idea, for sure.
Just one comment there, just keep in mind, because we really aren't making decisions on that column. We can make that column, you know, as big a minus as we want to, to just throw some ideas out so that when we do get to November, December, we can go back through this kind of process. So we don't have to settle on an amount tonight. So just FYI on that one.
Or put it slightly differently, any number we select tonight is subject to change in December anyway.
Yeah, right, right.
So those are the ones that we could assign numbers to for your consideration. Then there's also some of these other sort of bigger ideas that are kind of in the works. And those are the things such as climate action planning, affordable housing capacity, the Marcus Alert System, collective bargaining, the wage and compensation study. And so Sam, Ashley, and Mr. Rogers, did you all wanna speak to any of those?
With collective bargaining, we, the money has been set aside for the consultant, 685,000, something like that. Maybe not all of that will be used, and some of it can be used for, for, for training internally, getting our managers ready for the bargaining process, some of it may be allocated for the actual result of a negotiated contract with some of the units. The compensation study, there still remains 685,000 for that. I, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Ashley, or Chrissy. But I think that's what we left, we split the account, it was 1.2 that was in it. But anyway, the compensation study, Ashley says that's correct. The compensation study will, will yield some additional cost in terms of identifying positions that are not now competitive and recommend to us a increment necessary to bring certain positions up to the competitive level. And that will play hand in hand with collective bargaining, because that will bring us to a certain level. And then the bargaining process would be, certainly seek to add on to that. And, you know, you have no way of predicting it, but the, once we do the compensation study and action has been taken, at least we have a good argument as management that, that we have made improvements. And that should make the result of the bargaining process slightly more predictable and reasonable, I would think. Mr. Rogers, I understand you then, so you're saying that for rows 80 and 79, we have money sort of, not only set aside, but contracts or studies or whatever, sort of either ongoing or about to start or whatever, to get some really good answers to those questions. And it sounds like there's even a little potentially extra money in there to use if we have to like partially fund a position or something to help enact some of those pieces, is that correct? And then maybe for the next budget cycle, we could, because like you say, we won't really know what, what rates need to look like, or whatever term salaries need to look like until we get through those two items. That's correct. The collective wage and compensation study is underway. We've had a couple of sessions on that, the team is, is working, and we expect that to take nine, at least nine months, maybe 10, for us to come back and report to you what the result is. The collective bargaining, we just received the- Uh, the collective bargaining, we uh, just received the bids last, uh, last week. Uh, for those that we are looking, uh, looking at those uh, responses now. To select a uh, consultant to work with us in shaping the uh, a collective bargaining ordinance to bring to you. And uh, as I uh, promised, that should be uh, within uh, uh, let's say ninety days from, I think, March. Uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Payne, pinned it down on that one. Uh, so, so I think, think in, in uh, June, uh, uh, latter part of June, we should have. Uh, a clear path of, of where we're going with uh, with that.
And just.
And that's funded with uh, currently uh, with money that had been set aside, uh. And so we're not to worry about the end of the year uh, uh, with, with those funds.
And this would, so just to be clear with that, this would be on top of the staff position related to collective bargaining that's already in the budget.
Right, that's.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so my, my sense then is for item seventy-nine and eighty, um, we could just leave those blank at this point. That's my, that's, that's what I'm hearing, I don't know about other counselors.
Yeah, I, 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 I think, I think that's right, I mean, we, we will, we will know by the time we get to uh. Uh, the fall, we will have uh, some indication on eighty. In terms of uh, what improvements we should be making to our overall compensation system, how much that will cost and you consider that at that time. Um, and I think collective bargaining, um, once uh, uh, you get into the process, uh. Uh, if it goes well and, and uh, we're able to reach an agreement. Uh, I, I'm, I think it will have an impact on twenty-four.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, yeah.
So while we're looking at that scene there, Marcus Alert System, Other Criminal Justice Reform. One of the questions that I had asked in this section was. Are we moving forward to being able to comply with federal law as it pertains to the nine-eight-eight? Uh, suicide hotline, uh, that's going to be required effective July one, twenty-twenty-two? If so, where does that appear in the budget? Um, somebody comment on that?
Yes, sir, um, so I reached out to Mr. Saxton, who's our executive director of our emergency communication center. For nine-eight-eight specifically, which was where your question lied. It's important to remember that that will end up being a regional effort because we have a regional ECC. The bad news is, while we know there will be some associated costs for uh, the team to plan and build the process. Where nine-one-one callers experiencing a mental health crisis are first screened. And then if they match with nine-eight-eight criteria routed to nine-eight-eight, we don't have that number yet. Um, and this again is coming um, from, I appreciate Mr. Saxton, um, being very quick and responsive on it. Um, what we're finding across the state uh, is that. If you were not a locality that has piloted this work, everybody is feeling their way. And I wish that I could tell you I needed five hundred thousand dollars to get it off the ground or two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, but unfortunately, at this point, I cannot do that with any accuracy. What I can share though is within CPD's budget, there has been some funding set aside for more community policing aspects. And I've spoken with Acting Chief uh, Duratt to talk about utilizing perhaps that place and space in their budget. To begin a co-responder model and there's multiple models to choose from. Um, some bringing in civilians, some civilian and sworn, uh, the model that it appears that our counterparts in Alamo are going with. Has um, sworn officers, individuals from fire as well as civilians. So there's multiple ways to do it, either way you do have to end up designating um, some time and some funding allocations towards it. And I'm very thankful that uh, Major Duratt had already thought of that process and moved some appropriate money for us to have a little bit of flexibility. When we think about the co-responder model.
So I guess the, the question is, do we need to have something in box B seventy-eight right now?
I was thinking the same thing, Mayor, I was thinking that we um, might want to look at how much Admiral County has put in for the C-TAC. Um. The joint venture with region ten that they had recently announced. Um, I know we're still a little ways away from that on our end and looking, but we do know that that's going to require funds.
Any idea the, even the order of magnitude, are we talking about a million dollars, half a million dollars, more, less?
Yeah, it can be something just like we did for the firefighters, just kind of start squirreling away some funds for it, you know?
Well, I'm not sure it's a matter of squirreling away because it's, it's going to be a, an expense that we're in, in theory supposed to be able to. Start spending the money on July one.
Right, but um, as I see now, we, we're not sure of what it is, I mean, if we put some aside now.
Well, I, I, I'm fine with, with putting in something that seems like a, a reasonable starting point. I guess part of the question is, uh, Ms. Marshall had suggested that there may be some, uh, some money in the police department budget. That is already kind of perhaps going in this direction, did I correctly understand what you're saying? In which case, i- in which case, uh, the question is. You know, how much more might they reasonably expect to need if they were going to go that way? Or to put it slightly differently, how, uh, is, would there be a notion that, let's say, we don't get it ready by July one? But maybe we get it ready by September one or something to say, at that point, we will come back with a plan that we've worked out with. ECC with Alamo County, put the whole package together, now we've got a number. We don't have the plan here in April, but we'll have the plan by the fall and let's make sure we put some money there so that it's available if we need it. Does that sound like a reasonable course at this point?
So are you suggesting like a hundred fifty thousand or something to just?
I don't know, I, I don't know what I'm suggesting, I'm suggesting an approach. Uh, and, and then how much money we decide we want to put there is a, is a second question.
Ms. Marshall, do you know roughly what um, Acting Chief Duratt has in that, his own sort of bucket?
So the police folks were on this call, are they available to us?
We have about forty-five right now.
Forty-five what? Okay.
Thousand, okay.
And what is that forty-five thousand designated for?
So, I'll jump in, so this is uh, part of what we talked about, the reallocation of um, removing SWAT. Um, changing kind of our, our negotiations, our crisis response and building out this um, community response. Line item and group that would eventually start to build in, kind of like what the county model's doing of uh, this. This mixed use assisting region ten and, and other community groups to provide assistance. Uh, this is also funding like what we said, it uh, funds our crisis negotiation teams, further training on that. It helps to cover any CIT costs that we need for officers. Um, any further education on that line, it's also a funding source, you know, we get a lot of these TDO transports that um, and, and TDOs that. ECOs that we have to sit with that can sometimes take days, so this is kind of a small funding source to help us alleviate some of the. Uh, the burdens financially that we experience with that.
So Alamo County has put aside a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. And a hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars for a community response. As a one-time startup cost.
Do we know what they're actually going to do with that money?
Um, that's, I believe, I mean, I know I'm planning a meeting with Lisa Bytes. That I believe that is the program.
Right, you and I are both going to be meeting with her and.
Yeah.
She, she sent an email today saying, how about we defer it a couple of weeks?
But that's the whole, um, I believe that's the, how to start. That, and I know. I'm thinking some of that might be about trying to find a way to have somebody else besides police officers be with somebody.
Well, I'm, I'm wondering if, if the county has, has said a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. And we can reasonably infer from the fact that they've got a number that's actually specified with six significant figures. That they've done at least some thinking on it. Would it be reasonable for us to say, with the same degree of admitted lack of certainty and admitted lack of specificity? Supposing we said a hundred thousand dollars in that, in that box. And that will at least give us something to focus our thinking on when it gets time to, to figure out more specifically what the plan is.
Yeah, I support that.
Yeah, Ashley points out that, that uh, the county money has been set aside for partnership with the DSS. Police and Fire, do you have any additional information, uh, Ashley, on that?
Um, no, sir, outside of the fact that it is um, set aside that a hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars as a one-time cost. Sort of to spin that work up, it is important to note that that cost is different than um, uh. Councilmember McGill mentioned the C-TAC, which is Crisis Intervention. Ooh, I forget the rest of the acronym, but it is a, a location where an individual who is um, currently experiencing mental health crisis. Can go instead of an ER during a ECO, um, typically those individuals would be um, non-combative. Um, you know, uh, and at this point in my understanding and uh, CPD team, please correct me if I'm wrong. Is that the proposed C-TAC would have limited hours and accept one uh, individual in crisis at a time. So just wanted to make sure that I was um, expressing that those are two separate projects um, that do two separate things. Um, but it appears for their specific Marcus Alert focused co-responder model. They've only set aside um, some one-time allocation, most likely to start spinning up that co-responder work. And to see what it looks like to work best in their community.
Thank you for that clarification, I was not clear on that yet, again, we haven't, I haven't had a chance to talk to Lisa about this fully. Um, so I think a minimum of a hundred thousand needs to go there because. Though both of those projects kind of fall into that Marcus Alert readiness and we will need to be getting ready for that.
I would just suggest, um, you know, if, you know, at least exploring whether that can be done with money that's already been allocated to CPD. In terms of whether there are any cost savings from um, vacant positions that won't be filled, that could cover that amount. Um, and then the only other thing would be, um. We may get to this in the VCF conversation, but I know one of the recommendations from um, our working groups was increased funding for the public defender's office. And we may capture that conversation then, um, but that's another line item that comes to mind.
So councillor Payne, are you okay with a hundred thousand dollar placeholder for now?
As an amount, but I think, you know, we would be better positioned if we're thinking about, are there ways that we can do that with already allocated money to CPD? Um, given that it seems like there's going to be a number of positions that George is going to build, um, but.
Okay. All right.
I think it's going to need both CPDs. As well as additional beyond it, regretfully, we're going to have to be building something. So much stuff is over here right now and in order to move it over here, we have to build this first for these people here, not to fall off a cliff. Um, and I, and so I think it, having money put into this now. So that as we are transferring responsibilities over, people aren't falling into a crack.
Well, so let me just say, one of my least favorite parts of the budget process is the notion that we would suddenly come up with a brand new program. On the last night before we're going to pass the budget. Uh, and I, I think we recognize the complexity of it and we recognize that it's going to be interconnected with the county and their efforts. And with ECC and their efforts and everybody else. Um, and I, it's certainly something that we're going to need to, to spend some serious time on. Uh, but as I said before, probably by the fall, maybe even by July one, but certainly not before April twelfth.
So, Mr. Mayor, if we have a number. I, I say a hundred grand, a hundred thousand. Vice Mayor Wade, what do you think? You there, Juan?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was going to say one fifty, but I'm fine with a hundred.
Okay, we, we'll go with a hundred.
Yeah.
Figure that the, the, the CPD has already said they got forty-five thousand that, that might have something to do with this, so.
Okay.
But, but it's also not going to be a budget that we're going to, going to be stuck with for, for long. Because if all else fails, we can be looking at the surplus in December to, if we recognize that things. Uh, that the plan that we've come up with just is not affordable, given that amount of money.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm under the category of uh, uh, having your least favorite thing to happen on the last night of the budget. Uh, I, I, in this internal capacity uh, area, uh, uh, I had a conversation with Deputy. Uh, City Manager, uh, Sam Sanders this afternoon and we've been working on um. Uh, with BDOT and, and uh, the projects we have going there and working on our capacity with project managers. Or the lack of them or insufficient number of project managers and, and he came today, having gotten to a conclusion. That uh, uh, he needs uh, assistance with uh, to, to move that project along. Sam, I've set it up for you, so.
You have set it up and I am ready, um, Chrissy, if you would, take your slides down and let me pull this up just so that I can address. Uh, climate action, housing, and now public works engineering as priorities. All right, are you able to see that screen?
Yes.
So just wanting to give you the, the details to go along with consideration for climate action and for housing. Since that too was a part of the conversation on Saturday. Um, recognizing the, the discomfort that exists with just asking to set aside money without any idea of how it'd be, how it would be used. Uh, did spend some time with the team, uh, trying to identify what some various thoughts could be. I'm still asking that we not be held to picking or choosing specifically from this list, just more or less offering that there are options. As to what we could do and wanted to give you samples to consider what um, allocations could be made and how they could be utilized. But also wanted to frame that the work session on Monday on affordable housing. And the work session that you'll have on the eighteenth on climate action. Both are uh, aimed at trying to make sure that we are all on the same page, singing from the same uh, sheet music. So that in itself, it doesn't necessarily work from needing to approve a budget next week. But um, again, wanted to give you enough to, to consider as you uh, look at being able to set something up for an investment in climate. And an investment in housing, so under climate, these are some examples of climate action projects that the team has offered up. Home energy audits is something that we're doing right now, we could increase those and do more. A, um, the next item would be a pilot streetlight conversion. It would be to test the notion of what we can do with the lighting choices that we are making in the streetlight section. Make changes there and then demonstrate that that is something that we could roll out in a larger, bigger impactful way at some point in the future. Consider offering a community supplement, which would be more or less an incentive to individuals who are purchasing uh, EV vehicles over standard vehicles. Also looking at incentivizing for solar integrations would be again, a stipend of some kind to households for choosing to integrate solar into uh. Their home operations. And then the other option would be, we are currently, as I mentioned in the report on Monday. Uh, moving forward with the feasibility study for the transit side of the operations at CAT. Um, but the climate side would not be an item that could be funded uh, in a similar fashion, so. Funds could be set aside for us to study the pupil side and see if there is an opportunity to align both of those as, as part of the consideration. For what a conversion of the fleet or um, the different alternatives to, to fueling. Those various uh, buses on both sides of the cat house would be a chance to look at that. So that we, I'm not necessarily uh, committing you to anything, I would say to you that. A hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the climate space would pull a. A hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the climate space would pull a couple of these items off that list if you wanted to consider it for that perspective. On the housing side, um, we know that we're going to have uh, clip compliance management uh, needs as I've shared with you in the presentation on Monday. There could potentially be a need for software. We want to look at extending current software programs, so there might be adding a module as an option. We, we haven't been able to start that process yet, so we don't really know what that would cost. But funding is set aside for that purpose would allow us to do that and execute within this next fiscal year. Uh, I share with you in the Saturday conversation that we do need to consider some innovate, in intervention in the homeless space. So looking for innovation projects and being able to do some feasibility studies on those would be something that would be available for us. As well as what I would call a housing-first gap analysis. We know within the continuum of care that exists for Charlottesville. There are gaps in multiple places that has been um, basically reminded to us over and over in the various conversations. We've been hosting in the homeless rumble that Deputy City Manager Marshall has coordinated. And this will be give us a chance to analyze some of those and come up with potential recommendations on how even the housing investments that we are running today as a program. Anything could potentially be shifted to do something specific uh, to closing that gap. So I'm offering for your consideration there, a hundred and seventy-five thousand could do one or more of these items. Within the next fiscal year to again further deliver on the proposal that we would like to uh, begin working on rebooting. That affordable housing program that I talked to you about in depth on Monday. But.
Mr. Sanders, you're saying a hundred and fifty for the climate additional capacity and a hundred and seventy-five. For the additional capacity for housing.
Right. And because I, I am a fundraiser in my past life, I will ask for more money. So because of uh, the, the setup that Mr. Rogers shared with you is to uh, hot off the press news. Um, adding that I actually need to prioritize Public Works Engineering over both of these at this moment. Um, not to dismiss them as important, uh, we need to invest in our climate action planning as well as our housing uh, afforded, our housing programs. But as Mr. Rogers described, our engineering division is in need of a reboot. Uh, I've been spending a lot of time looking at where things are in that space today. Uh, they too, the leadership team, uh, as well as the entire uh, engineering division has been digging deep to be able to bring back to me. Uh, a presentation of what would it take to get our transportation, planning, project management, house in order? Um, the critical need is capacity. We need more people in that space. These are the three positions that would be of critical importance. They check multiple boxes, which is why I focused on them over any other consideration that was offered. We need uh, just project management capacity period. We need more hands to do the projects that we currently have in our, in our inventory. We need a project manager dedicated to ADA. We are not doing a good job in the ADA space. We know this. We've known this for quite some time. We have a transition plan that tells us we need to do more. We have to do better. This would be a chance to check in a considerable way how we can do more with being able to set aside funds today, which you are doing in the CIP. But not necessarily being, being able to deploy them as we need. This would give us the opportunity to dedicate capacity to ensuring that that money is moving and is not sitting. And then we really, really need assistance with the financial management of all these federal funds and state funds that are coming in to the, to the. To the city for us to do these projects. Um, just being upfront with you as to what's coming, there is going to be a presentation to you. I imagine Mayor Snook that offering of a special work session for more time is probably going to be focused on our VDOT program. Uh, in the very near future, we're headed into a facilitated conversation with our district. To look at rebooting the size and operations as they exist today. It will call for actually potentially canceling projects, turning some projects over to VDOT and the team keeping some other projects. All of this is in the vein of getting us ready for what is coming forward with the infrastructure and transportation program that the federal government has funded. If we don't get ourselves together now, we will not be ready for that and Counselor Payne will be very upset when all that money passes us. As he's continued to remind me that we've got to get ready. This is how we get ready. So I lay that before you as I need three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to bring these three people on staff as soon as possible.
So wait us to, to frame what you just said about the, the engineering, anything having to do with project managers, I support. Is that these are, these basically are unlocking, this investment unlocks. A lot of other potential investment in our community by the federal government. Is that a way to look at this?
It is, but first and foremost, it's about making sure that we can do a better, we'll, we'll do better at what we're already attempting to do. And then we will be able to unlock, yes.
But I think it's really important for the community to know that if we. I mean, all three of these buckets are really important and, you know, climate and housing, we've heard lots about. Uh, and this, this new one about engineering. That's, I think, you know, Counselor Payne is, is right on. If we, if we're not like laying the groundwork with having the capacity. Then we're going to miss out and we don't want to do that.
And it'll be in a big way. I mean, it, it is unfortunate that if we don't get this ready, we, we will miss potentially all of what we have in our current coffers for doing this work. Could pass this by.
So this, um, three fifty, three fifty would be subtracted from. Back to that spreadsheet that Chrissy was showing us before, be subtracted from that. Was it nine? I'm sorry.
So I'm going to take, I'm going to take this down. Chrissy, you can pull that up and if you captured what I shared, what I offered, then that'll be a place to start, I guess. I can repeat them if you didn't get them.
Okay, can I, so can we backtrack for just a second? Collective bargaining and wage compensation, we were at zero. Did everybody agree on that?
I think so.
Okay. Now, if we go back, so Sam, how, how did you want to split these up?
Screen, is that? Are other people seeing it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I see it.
Yes.
Okay. You got it?
Climate action is one fifty. Housing, housing one seventy-five. And then adding engineering, uh, public works engineering at three twenty-five. As a new line item.
And I am in full agreement with one, I mean, we've, we've definitely been hearing about, we've heard about ADA. Issues for you, for my entire time on council. Which albeit it's only been a little over two years, so it's not that big of, but um. Additionally, with the Build Back Better money, we have to be in position for this. It was made very clear that we have to have our house in order to apply for this stuff. Um, and this is, this is, you know, some of this money is a hundred percent federal match money. We don't have to match anything. It's coming in and taking care of bridges. They could cost us ten, twenty million dollars. Um, and so I am a hundred percent behind this and I know it's not. It's not the stuff that are these incredible new projects. But it's the backbone of making sure that our city is functioning well, so that we can do some of those incredible new projects.
Chrissy, it's three twenty-five for engineering.
I'm sorry.
And uh. We'll take all the money, sorry.
And, and likewise, I would be in support of all three of those areas for the same reasons. You know, these are the nuts and bolts. We just have to do well. Um, and I'm thinking not even of just, um. You know, the bipartisan infrastructure law, but even, you know, we're allocating money and out years to. You know, the, the, the sidewalk, how am I blank, scribbling avenues, scribbling avenue sidewalks. Well, that's great, but if we don't have the project managers to do it, so what? So, um, I think these are just necessary.
That's a real concern.
Yeah, I'm in support of it, so.
I agree on all three of them too.
And Chrissy, because I don't want to take all the money again and appear greedy, you can change the grant specialist to one twenty instead of one forty-five.
Right here.
Yeah, there was, we, when we were looking at options of how do we compare that role, since it's not one that exists, we can go down a little bit on that one.
Thank you, Sam.
And ARPA specialists have said flat out that. ARPA does allow for a special, a specialist to be hired to help with this. And they actually highly recommended that we do it.
We certainly ought to explore it.
So are you suggesting it not go in here or that would be an additional person?
No, I, I just, I think it should stay in there. I'm just, I'm just saying that I do believe that we will be able to have ARPA funding for it. But the other, other piece is ARPA funding is only going to be for a year or so, so if it's a position that we end up wanting to keep permanently. Or because things like the Build Back Better money are going to take a few years to filter through and have reporting requirements. That at least maybe we can get, I think it needs to be built into the budget.
Okay, this will do that. Okay, any other questions on any of these? Is everybody good with what I have here?
I am. What's the sum total of the ads, one twenty-two seventy?
We're at one point three six basically in this section.
Okay. Thank you. Balance of two fifty-six, is that correct?
That's correct. So moving on, um, before we, um. Move up to the CIP portion, these were a couple other things that came out of the retreat. Um, we talked about them as a team and thought that these were more of sort of future capacity building. Or future initiatives that really don't have dollars assigned to them per se at this point. Um, but again, these were some of the things that came out of your retreat, so we just wanted to pop these up and make sure you agreed with those. Um, revisiting the VCF process and reporting was one we talked about. Future funding needs for CAT, Housing and Climate Action. Again, that's just sort of those big picture ideas. I think Sam's helped you. Kind of narrow down some dollars in this budget for that. Um, future phases of public housing redevelopment. Um, reconfiguration for Walker, that's another um, topic we've been talking about in conjunction with the Beaufort Project. Um, in addition to additional funding for homelessness efforts and the solutions and measurements. Are you guys okay with tabling those for now?
Yeah, I mean, it feels like with the, the support, I, row eighty-nine, that what Mr. Sanders spoke to earlier does kind of get it that. Same for row eighty-six, I feel like we're, we're thinking about that. Uh, row eighty-seven in terms of future public housing redevelopment, you know, I'll just have to wait and see what those numbers look like, but. I don't think we're at a point where we can consider them now. And then Walker, I think my own view is don't forget about Walker, but we, we get Beaufort done. First and, and then we begin to think about Walker.
And I would, um, I would just add when it comes to the future phases of public housing redevelopment, there's not only. West Haven, which is going to be, you know, the big one over a hundred million dollars, you know, doesn't necessarily mean that all is city money. Um, but there's also planning for parallel track for um, Mickey Drive and other areas. How those could be renovated and improved along with the current projects underway, so. You know, I don't, I don't know what year, you know, we slip it in, but the biggest thing to me is that, um, as we're thinking through. The revenue side and the expenditure side, that we're leaving enough fiscal room where. Um, we haven't shut off our possibility to start planning for those expenses when they come due. Um, and I think we're much better positioned than we were even a month ago on that count. Um, but it's certainly going to weigh on. My thinking on the revenue side once we get there.
The only comment I would offer is that I, I hope we would not be sitting there thinking. We're going to wait until we're finished with the Beaufort project before we start thinking about the Walker project. I would hope we would perhaps, perhaps be able to tee it up so that it, at the very least could be sort of a continuous. Okay, we finished this one and now we're moving right into the construction of the next. But that's not a, that's not a budget issue really at this point.
That's a really good point, Mayor.
So.
Okay, so we're going to move on, move on back up if everybody's good with that.
Yep.
Okay, um, so do you want to talk about the school project next or do you want to talk about agencies and nonprofits? Those are the last two sections.
Agencies.
Okay. Um, so again, these were based on, um. Comments, we've heard things from the retreat, um, things that you all provided us. This is a list of potential changes um, in funding, um, and. We'll just leave, I don't know if you want to go one by one, if you all want to have ones you want to speak to first, I'll leave that up to you.
Should we start from the top?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, let's do it.
So the first one was AHIP.
And I, I had suggested seventy-five thousand dollars extra and the argument, I, I want to sort of sketch out for the public. What I put into a very detailed memorandum for other counselors, that I don't feel it is appropriate for us. Or particularly a good idea for us to try to redo the work of the VCF committee. They have spent probably thousands of hours collectively to analyze more than fifty grant applications. And to make some very fine detailed assessments of them. Uh, and so I am inclined, as you can say, strongly inclined to go with their recommendation. Unless it meets a couple of criteria, either number one, that it is something that it's, it's a policy decision that's kind of uniquely ours. Uh, that we, we need, feel we need to, to affirm or reaffirm. And the second is if it looks like simply that there was a mistake. And with AHIP, the one thing that it appears is because their uh, their funding. Uh, that, that they were deemed a two A organization and if you will recall, one A is getting eighty-five percent. And one B is getting sixty-five percent and two B is getting thirty-five percent. And two A, there's only one two A organization, that's AHIP. And I, I, and they were being given thirty-five percent of their requested allocation. Uh, and I just felt that we ought to, at the very least, make them comparable to the one B. In both cases, they're sort of one judgment away from being the top, uh, but they would not deserve to be at the bottom. Uh, so if we gave, if we bump them up to sixty-five percent, that would add about seventy-five thousand dollars to, to their. To their uh, allocation. Uh, that's one of the very few times in all of this that I'm recommending. Deviating from the VCF recommendation.
I'm good with seventy-five for AHIP.
And I would add that I, they, they do an important piece of, of work that nobody else seems to be doing. And that's an important thing too. They do the repairs that help keep houses affordable.
And, and keep them in the house.
And keep people in the house. I mean, the, the most affordable house is the one you're already in. And if we can keep people in their houses, then, then we're doing good work.
Okay, I'm, I'm good with that. Michael, um, Cena?
I'm good with that for AHIP, um, and I know we'll get into it, but I do disagree philosophically on. You know, the other items as we get to them, but we'll get to, and we get to those.
Okay, well, so we'll get, get the one, I'm sorry.
Um, I just, you know, I mean. This is again, a good reason though, as to why we need to be putting the housing funding in one bucket. Um, because AHIP also does get money from the CDBG process, I believe, and the whole, or the home process. Um, and also the CAF process, so. I don't know what the overall total AHIP is receiving is.
And are we planning to do that? I mean, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time remembering, but there is a plan in place or something's been suggested recently. About putting all of the VCF.
That was the Affordable Housing Presentation in the, on Monday night that Sam gave.
Yeah, it was the longer term goal.
Um, I'm just bringing that up in regards, I know that AHIP is the only place that's doing this right now. And I, I'm not against AHIP as an organization. I, I'm not against any of our nonprofits as organizations. Um, I just want to make sure. that, that is respected there, that we are looking at an agency that gets money from three different areas.
Yeah, when we clean that up, that'll be a good thing in terms of having it all come through the housing.
Yep.
I agree.
Okay, so are we agreed on that seventy five? Sounds like it.
Yes.
Okay, far internship program. This is, I guess, Michael, the spot where you and I are going to philosophically disagree.
Yeah.
Yes, um, I, I did support, um, additional funding there.
Same here, yeah.
And I, I do not for, basically because of the reason I just said. But, you know, it's interesting to me that the far internship program, every year, all three years I've been on council, they have felt that they did not get an appropriate award out of the VCF process and, and their, their approach has been to come lobby us directly. And I don't know why it is, because of course I haven't sat on the committees. Uh, I don't know why it is that every year it doesn't seem to matter who the, the people are on the committee, on the VCF committee, but they're always giving the far internship program a much lower, uh, ranking. And I don't know why that is, but when you get, I mean, the, the makeup of the three committees has been significantly different over the years. And we seem to be getting the same sort of result. And I wonder, uh, whether there isn't something uh, meritorious in whatever judgment they're making.
Yeah, so I'm with the mayor on this one. Uh, no.
Yeah, and I'll just briefly say, you know, the, how I'm thinking of it and approaching it is, um, you know, we began changes to the vibrant community fund process a few years ago. Um, we all acknowledge that those changes were incomplete and unfinished, but we haven't gotten around to doing a deep dive. And I know there's been a lot of turnover with the lead people who are working on that. And I do think that it should broadly guide us, which I think it has and will. Um, but we are ultimately the final decision makers and, um, I think it can be within our good judgment to make some changes here and there. Um, but I understand in, in the, the different viewpoint.
Yeah, uh, and, and I think that the work that they, that they do and some of the other ones is, is really hard to, to measure, you know, when a, a building is, is done and, or when a widget is done, but you know, the type of work that they do is a little bit hard to, to measure. And, and I would like to have a voice in, in the parameters that we give the, the committee to, to judge. And I know that that's something that we will be doing hopefully over the, the next year. But anyway, I'm in support of additional funding for, for this, um.
So the thing is with Cena, what's your pleasure?
Uh, um, I mean, I would like to figure out what is going on with the application. Um, I, I, again, the whole vibrant community process, this is just kind of highlighting every year, this happened last year as well. Um, and we all voted to give FAR the extra money. Um, again, we don't see the applications and this is not, and that's, we have so many people who are sitting here taking their time and putting into these applications, um, and to review them and I just, we need some things. I am definitely going to vote to increase it for FAR because I do believe in what they are doing. Their program has been, I believe it is, I mean, they helped get a lot of community engagement. Um, I don't know if it's just not being documented well, how they're measuring this. Um, I'm, I'm not sure what's happening here and um, I'm really hoping that next year we do not find ourselves in the same situation again. And so I just, I know staff has been more than happy to give technical support on grant applications. Um, and I, I'm really hoping that people take our staff up on that in the future and make sure that they follow the recommendations um, of the technical assistance so that we can, yeah, I, I'm voting to fund it, but, um, yeah. Something's going on in this process. It's obviously not working right.
So they had asked for that program for twenty thousand one hundred dollars. The present allocation would give them seven thousand thirty five dollars. That's at thirty five percent. Uh, if they were to get the sixty five percent that we have suggested, in other words, effectively to say that instead of two B, we should consider them either a two A or a one B. That would be thirteen thousand sixty five dollars. I haven't done the math. If we're decide that they were to be equivalent of a one A, but it would be roughly seventeen thousand dollars. Um, so those of you who are talking about increasing the funding, what are you talking about increasing it to?
When I, in my notes, I had a seventeen thousand dollar figure.
So you would make them effectively a one A?
Correct.
How do other folks feel about that?
I'm supportive of that.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. So whatever eighty five percent of twenty thousand one hundred dollars, that's, that would be seventeen thousand eighty five dollars, I guess.
Twenty thousand one hundred, you said?
Yes. Bingo. Okay, Jefferson School African American Heritage Center, we're missing a C in the middle there. Uh, they have asked for two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, and that effectively is the rent that they are having to pay that apparently, well, actually it's not, it's more than the rent that they're having to pay. Um, do we, we found the lease, uh, what, how much is that rent? What's, what's the actual request here?
The lease is, uh, the lease does not expire until November. And, uh, in terms of impact on, uh, FY twenty three budget, we would be covering them from November to June. Uh, I believe that's a hundred and sixty six thousand dollars for the first year. And, uh, then the next year, um, I, I think it, it is at, at, uh, two hundred thousand dollars. I'm not, I don't have the lease in front of me right now. But they, they had a, uh, they are leasing from the, the, a foundation and they had a five year lease with five year, with a five year option. So in addition to the twenty three allocation, uh, a decision has to be made now or later. Uh, in terms of whether you are, we're going to commit to the five year or whether we're going to allow an option if we are permitted on the law to do so to go, uh, the additional, uh, five years. And how that is done, I would recommend that we fund them in twenty three uh, to pick up their, uh, their lease from expiration uh, until the end of, uh, our fiscal year. And, uh, and give us some time to work through uh, a few of the mechanics in terms of uh, whether the money goes to the foundation um, or, or the Heritage Center and, and how that works out because there is also the separate discussion of the long-term outstanding relationship of, uh, the, the foundation uh, with the, uh, with the city in terms of the initial, uh, financial support given by the city that was supposed to be um, addressed somehow and, and, and that has not come to a, come to a conclusion yet. So I was talking with Lisa about that and, and I, I think we need some more time to work on it, but let's make the decision to take care of the Heritage Center so that they are not worried about their, uh, whether their, their, uh, lease is going to be covered for this, for this next year.
And I, I would agree with that. And I have two questions, I guess, is would the timing work up to have it paid for with the surplus for that, you know, this first one? Or is there sufficient money in our council strategic initiatives fund for that to potentially cover it?
There's a hundred and seventy six thousand dollars in council strategic initiatives fund right now. So that would pretty much take all of your money out of that account.
Well, so just to be clear, on city manager's recommendation, is it that we would basically take eight months of their, uh, of their lease, basically November through next June?
Yes.
Okay, and the, the base amount, uh, if for all twelve months is two hundred thousand dollars?
That's my record, that I believe, I believe that so. Um, I'm not looking at the lease that, right now. Lisa, do you, and, uh, is she, is she on, do you have, uh, happen to have a lease nearby?
No, I, I don't have it nearby. I'm sorry. Um, I think Ms. Marshall um, has been helping me with some calculations and I believe that, um, by her calculations, the cost was slightly under two hundred, um, for, for a full year.
Okay.
So if we're looking at eight months instead of twelve months on your recommendation, that would be a hundred and thirty three thousand three hundred and thirty three dollars.
I believe, I believe so, but I, I, I think that, um, since I'm not looking at the lease right, right now, let us uh, agree that we want to cover them for FY twenty three and we will put the exact amount in the appropriation ordinance that you would receive on, um, um,
Yeah, I, I heard you mention one sixty four, one sixty six at first, you know, so maybe that, that forty thousand dollar roughly difference is the difference between eight months and twelve months. So why, why don't we just say one seventy five for, for now and, you know?
I'm good with that.
And yes, part of this being then a larger discussion too on the properties that we lease and the properties that we loan, own, that we lease out and the incomes that we're getting in versus the incomes we are paying to other properties needs to all be on the table together.
That's coming.
Yep, and that's so, but again, I don't want the Heritage Center to suffer because um, but the, yeah, this needs to be part of a larger picture.
Right.
I'm just curious why, if the math works out to one thirty three, why we're saying one seventy five?
Well, I guess I'm saying one seventy five alongside the vice mayor, just because there seems some ambiguity.
Yeah.
Um, but, but like Mr. Roger said, they're going to come up with a precise number, so.
Yeah, so this is kind of a place.
Good enough tonight to see where our totals are. Or we could say one fifty if you prefer.
Yeah. Would that make you feel better, Lloyd, if we say one fifty?
Well, I mean, I, I'll be honest with you. I'm looking at the remaining decisions we have to make. And I'm looking at the remaining balance we have that shows us now being ten thousand dollars in the red. We've got, according to my calculations, perhaps another forty five, uh, fifty, sixty thousand dollars worth of things that I think there is a majority vote for. Um, and I, I don't know, I'm just, I'm trying to get closer to a zero in that yellow band.
Yeah, so I, yeah, I thought that this one seventy five or this amount was going to come from the strategic board strategic initiative. Is that part of this money here? It's a different pool. Yeah, so really, you know, we can, and.
Well, I think we have to vote on that, right? We have to make a decision if it's coming from the strategic.
Well, I would say, I would, I, I would suggest allocating it perhaps from that pool of money and then using, um, you're in surplus to replenish that account.
I agree with Michael.
Option.
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Okay, it, it occurs to me looking at this, by the way, that the seventeen thousand number we put in for the far internship program doesn't take into account that our present budget already allocates them a little over six thousand dollars, a little over seven thousand dollars. I think it's seven thousand thirty five at the moment. So it's effectively a hat, it's effectively point five times their, uh, times their budget. Yeah, okay, times their ask. There we go. Okay. So that moves us next to, uh, Piedmont Casa additional funding. And I have noted in my, my own comments, the same logic I've expressed before, uh, that I'm, I'm not inclined to second guess what the committee has done. And I say that even though I'm, I've been a financial supporter of Piedmont Casa as well as most of these other organizations as, as well. And I want to respect the decision that, that has been made. What do other folks say? I know there were some other votes for giving them some more money.
I'm with the mayor on this one.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I'm in support of, of, um, giving them some additional funding. Uh, you know, again, this is, um, I don't know the particulars, but, um, I know the work that they do and that, um, it is good for um, matching funds, um, so, but I'm, I'm in support of an amount. I'm not set on any particular amount, but.
And, and I agree with the, the vice mayor and I think fifteen thousand dollars was a figure I had seen in an email, but.
I thought they only asked for ten.
I, I don't have my vibrant community grant from last year with me right now.
Uh, let's see.
You know, looking at their organizational structure, um, I believe they had a brand new executive director who was coming on board during the beginning of the vibrant community process. I don't know who did their application this year. Um, and I'm wondering if that has a lot to do with why their score went so drastically far down?
They, they asked for ten thousand dollars.
And what did, how much, what was the percentage they got last year? Do we know?
Uh, see, I can find that. It'll take me a minute.
Well, do we know what, I guess the consensus of the group is now? I, I, I don't support giving them more money because of the reasons that, that the like, that the mayor laid out at the beginning, but I guess others have a, a number in mind.
I noticed, I know that even just a small amount, um, whether it comes from the vibrant community grant or whether or not we find a small amount in ARPA or something like that can just, I, this is, this is killing the processes. I know this is just destroying the process, this pro, oh, yeah.
Well, I think it's, you know, uh, Juan, what would you propose? Or Michael? Because we've got a lot more roads to go through here.
Yeah, yeah, I'm fine. We can split it and said twelve, five.
That's still more than they asked for.
What did they ask for?
Ten.
Ten.
Okay, ten.
Well, well, I mean, so no matter what, there, I mean.
Last year we gave them four thousand.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking was four thousand. I thought, I didn't think, yeah, even for, I mean, I was just thinking like four thousand, like we did last year. Um, which would also put them, that's like forty five percent or thirty five or forty percent, thirty five percent of what they asked, which is what a lot of other got.
I think there's some merit to, if you're going to do it, at least use one of the familiar percentages.
So I'd say thirty five percent of what they asked.
So that'd be thirty five hundred dollars.
Okay.
Yeah. Sounds good.
Okay. How about computers for kids?
So if the, if it's eligible for, um, our money, you know, um, I've, I'm, I'm going to be a big one. We redo the vibrant community funds that we need to support programs like this so that we won't be spending money on the other end. So, um, I am supportive of, um, funding.
I'm supportive of funding them with some ARPA money, um I believe that we could I believe that C four K can fit in that pretty easily um with the mentoring program.
Okay, so are we agreed zero for that? Um cell, and then for the next cell, maybe a note that says we'll
Whatever they reasonably justify.
Yes, a row twenty-nine, I mean, maybe if we just put a note there behind the word ARPA that
We've got the comment revisit with ARPA, that's appropriate.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, tree commission additional funding.
I support that, an extra twenty-five thousand dollars, particularly after the outpouring of support we had um after the tree commission uh gave their presentation, it was pretty remarkable, so.
Do we have the capacity to support twenty-five thousand dollars additional trees?
That's basically fifty more trees.
How many more?
Fifty. Five hundred dollars per tree is what they, what we've been budgeting for these things.
What kind of trees are we buying?
I have no idea.
I wanna start.
I think that's, that's a different, that's a different inquiry, I I wondered the same thing. Um but I assume that's also including the labor and everything else to put them in and to tend to them and make sure that that they don't dry up and die in the first three months and so on.
But they've been asking for a hundred thousand dollars in trees for several years, right? I thought that was like a standing thing that they had a hundred thousand for the CIP for trees.
I frankly don't remember, that that could be, it's just not ringing.
Wasn't it got cut during COVID? It used to be, in twenty nineteen, it was a hundred thousand, in twenty twenty, it got cut.
Twenty twenty wasn't COVID, but twenty-one was our COVID budget.
So.
And I think in twenty twenty, the reason why it was reduced was because there was a balance on the books.
That, and that comes back to my, like, do we actually have the capacity to plant another twenty-five thousand dollars in trees if we had, weren't planting them to begin with, when we were at a hundred thousand dollars before?
Yeah, I don't know how to ascertain that tonight, is that something? I doubt Mr. Sanders knows the answer to that, but maybe he does.
I am struggling, I wanted to be able to give you the answer, but no, I do not, um I'm looking um I did check, I don't see anyone from Parks and Rec on that could speak to it as well, so that that's a question that I can't bring any light to.
Wh- what's the question?
Twenty-five thousand dollars more in trees if we got, if we put it there, or would it end up just another part of the surplus later?
So that's in the CIP, um the the tree planning goes in the CIP, so if whatever dollars you approve here actually gets transferred to the capital projects fund.
Okay, I'm okay with that then.
So twenty-five thousand?
Additional funds, yes. Okay. Then CRHA additional funding. I'm not sure what that's an ask for. Is it that, you could say it's to in, to bump them up within the VCF? Because they didn't score very well, or or what, what's that an ask for?
I'm not sure either, my two requests related to CRHA were the reimbursement for the pilot program and then um moving to make them a contractual agency, I don't know what specifically that refers to.
Yeah.
There's expenditures we could give for C-Srap, but that's a much bigger and whole different conversation.
Yeah, and and that's what, and maybe that's what um they, maybe that was my comment, but I am in I had in mind what Michael was referring to, so maybe we don't need thirty-one.
Okay, just put a zero there for now.
I can also add for your, um just for some consideration, it'd be a separate action we'll have to bring back to council, but in regards to the rental assistance program, there is one point one million dollars still sitting available at this time because CRHA has been unable to spend it due to the lower um max uh rent allocations. So if you were to consider increasing, because they're gonna be receiving uh nine hundred thousand already as a part of the CIP that would take that up to two million dollars, you would have the room to actually increase the max rent to a hundred and fifty percent so that that option that's been offered for consideration, you can do it without any additional dollars.
Okay. Um and the only, we don't need to get into it now, the only consideration is just making sure we can maintain that permanently and nothing will happen with that, because obviously.
We're still gonna run into the issue.
In any case, that's another.
Okay, so the next line, add CRHA as a contractual agency. Uh I'm not quite sure what that's getting at either.
I think that was a comment from someone's email, but it may all be related to what you're discussing now, too.
I didn't see anybody putting a dollar figure on that among our different emails.
I don't, I don't know what a dollar figure would be, um but it just connects to the conversation around um drug court therapeutic docket in terms of changing our relationship with them.
I agree with that, uh it's, it's, CRHA is its own unique entity on this. I mean, it's, it it's, it's public housing, it's it's federal, state, local. Um I just, I agree that it should be a contractual agency.
Well, I I think there's a, uh we we get into a question about what we're really meaning by contractual agency but that's beyond the scope of what we need to do between now and and Tuesday the twelfth. Uh but it is a a greater discussion that we need to have later on.
Do you guys want me to move this down to the future capacity building column section?
If you'd like.
Great idea.
That, and also drug court and therapeutic docket would need to go there, too.
Well, there, I thought there were amounts we were gonna potentially add.
Oh, that's also fully funded, yeah, okay, but and make, it's it's two things, it's fully funded and make contractual.
Right. So the next thing up is the public defender issue, uh I had just frankly it's not quite picking a number out of the air, but it's trying to kind kind make sort of a compromise. I had recommended twenty thousand dollars, and let me tell you briefly why. Uh there is no question that the public defenders office uh attorneys get paid less than the prosecutors. However, trying to do an exact one person to one person match gets us into a lot of frankly, very difficult territory. Uh for example, the averages and the specific numbers will all change uh when, uh in all likelihood, we will have one of the, this or the senior uh deputy is gonna move up to become a judge, that opens up a vacancy, everybody else kind of moves up. And so what does that do to the attempt to compare people to people? I think it makes it very difficult. On the other hand, I I think that something additional uh needs to be done and then we look also at the question of whether we're supposed to be uh trying to fund an attorney who would be uh trying to to basically make the first appearance on a bond hearing for, in essence, anybody who's not represented when, when they're arrested. Uh it has been suggested that we do that in consultation with and cooperation with and splitting the cost with Almarle County, uh I don't know, and the the question is, is this person, this this additional responsibility a full-time job, which was estimated about seventy-five thousand dollars with costs and and benefits and so on? Or is it more like a halftime job as has been suggested? I don't think we know. I'm, I'm thinking that if we say, let's assume it's a halftime job, that would mean roughly thirty-seven thousand dollars per uh thirty-seven thousand dollars for the whole thing, so roughly seventeen, eighteen, nineteen thousand dollars uh for each city and county, in which case, if we gave twenty thousand dollars, that enables of them to fund that additional position if the county also puts in the same amount of money. We've, this is a situation where we didn't really have an opportunity for extended discussion because by the time the recommendation came out I can, I contacted the public defenders office to say, can you, uh ultimately, they sent me what they had submitted to the city and the county, which still has a lot of assumptions built into it that I would have wanted to discuss further, unfortunately, when I talked to Ms. Murta about it, she was in an airport someplace in the western part of the country and it wasn't really a very good opportunity to talk much, so I just picked twenty thousand dollars because I think it is a significant bump if they wanted to use it specifically for the the to to fund the person who would be doing the bonds, it could be used for that if they decided not to do it for that purpose. Then they could uh, you know, to help cover uh an increment for some of their staff who otherwise would not have that increment.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm hoping we could figure out how to make that whole work with the public defender contractual, I mean, that'd be a, you know, further, a future effort, and maybe that's not possible, I don't know, but to me, that seems to fall into the same kind of uh category as the drug court and the therapeutic docket.
So just to clarify on that point, a public defender is a contractual agency in in of sorts. Um we do have an MOU agreement with them, um and it was uh a base amount was set at the time of that MOU, and then what we have done in in the years past is um that was set aside to fund um a certain positions that were identified at that time, and then we typically just increased that contribution every year by the amount of any merit that city employees receive.
But there are three employees, as I understand it, who are not part of that.
That's correct, that's correct.
And this was, and they're basically the staff people rather than the attorneys.
That's my understanding as well.
And so at least part of Ms. Murta's ask was, give us the same kind of bump for the uh for the staff people as well. Again, I'm, I'm still not confident that I understand the whole picture well enough uh to to go all the way there, but I I'd I'd say we give them twenty thousand dollars and let them figure out which way they want to go with it.
And just one last, one last piece to that equation, um we do share that cost share with the county. Um and so the county basically does the same kind of thing, and as of the time of their budget, now I don't know what has changed since then. Um but as of the time of their budget, they were not providing additional funding for those additional three positions or the the um Just Seville Conversation Position, that may have changed, I don't know.
Well, at least.
All the more reason, it it does seem like with this particular, it's a really important function in our community, and it it seems like there's some more uh discussion that needs to happen going forward about how to make that relationship in terms of like every year, what what the um the sort of incremental funding would need to be, so uh hopefully we can capture that, I, I'm with Mr. Mayor in terms of twenty thousand.
How do other folks feel?
I'm fine with that, I mean, we've already just gone through it, but you know, as part of our um two criminal justice work groups, you know, one of the recommendations was a number of things relate to the public defenders office that go above twenty thousand, but for now, I'm okay with twenty thousand.
And I'm also hoping that we can, by putting this in too, we can encourage Almarle County to up theirs as well. Um I'm, wouldn't be surprised if they would be willing to, because I do believe that they also know that this is very important, um I believe um that we have that public defenders make the same as prosecutors.
Yeah.
And I think this is a a way to start working towards that.
There's also a recognition that we give uh a an enhancement to the salary of the prosecutors as well, so fairness is is really pretty critical there.
Mr. Wade, what do you think?
I'm sorry, I stepped away, are we still on the um?
Public defenders, twenty thousand bucks.
Yes, I'm fine with that, yes.
Yeah, I thought, I thought I remembered seeing on your spreadsheet that you were, so.
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh additional funding for Ready Kids Early Education Program. Again, I'm gonna stick with my, I'm be philosophically consistent, even though I was on the board of Ready Kids for, I don't know, six or eight years and I I'm very much fond of their program, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be philosophically consistent. Other folks have expressed a desire to give them more money, so I will defer to those to to speak now.
Yeah, I'm with the mayor on this one.
Yeah, and likewise, Lloyd, I was on their board as well, but I'll, in many years ago but I also was more recently on the school board, and I know the impact of this program on the kids as they, you know, get ready for school, so I'm in support of um um some level of funding for them.
They are receiving some funding, correct? It's just that it got matched towards what the what the cost per child was as it was with Almarle County.
Right. Then what happened was, th- this is a program, they asked for a hundred and thirteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars. Uh it was decided by the committee to give them ten thousand, nine hundred dollars, which is effectively ten percent. And the reason for that, as well as on two of the other Ready Kids applications was basically noting that it was based on the cost per participant. And one of the specific concerns was that the cost per participant uh on the application for city funding uh worked out to a whole lot more than the cost per participant on the application for county funding, and this, th- there were five applications that got their amounts cut back because of that disparity, three from Ready Kids. Mac ahead start was the other one, and a Piedmont Housing Alliance Management and Development uh program was was the fifth. Uh so, you know, I, we we had some extended discussions about this and whether it was fair or appropriate, or whatever adjective you want to use to try to uh attach uh perhaps a new criterion for decision. Uh that criterion for decision being this this question of cost per participant. And I I eventually came down to thinking, it was not unfair, it may be a new consideration but it should, it shouldn't be a terrible surprise uh to to the applicant, so in that sense, it wouldn't be unfair to to say we're gonna look at the same cost per participant, whether it's a city application or a county application recognizing that this is a discussion that I think people ought to have honestly and openly next year during the application process. So that, that's my reason for saying no, no matter how much I like Ready Kids.
So Cena, Juan, and Michael, where y'all stand on it?
Um, did you have a dollar amount in in mind, Vice Mayor Wade?
Can't hear you.
Can, I was asking.
Yeah, I'm saying, I didn't have anything in mind, if we use a percentage of, you know, like we have done before, percentage of the one, one thirteen, I think.
If you're gonna use a thirty-five percent of you, if you go to the full sixty-five percent uh then that would be roughly seventy-three, seventy-four thousand dollars, which would be adding uh about sixty-three, sixty-four thousand dollars.
I, I will be open to, you know, discussion with, I guess, Cena and.
I think I'd seen in an email you sent uh vice mayor a figure of thirty-six thousand, and I would be open to that amount.
Yeah.
I'd be open to thirty-six. Um, yeah, I'm.
That's the amount they got last year, thirty-six, eight, forty-six they got last year.
Um, and I think we do need to be very clear with our nonprofits that, you know, we we need to be even with the county on. We need to be even with the county on service provision cost. Charging us significantly more per person. Is not gonna be okay in the future.
So do you want to say the thirty-six, eight, forty-six that they got last year?
Yeah.
Is that the total? Is there some number?
Oh, that's true. Yeah, they're already getting ten thousand, nine hundred, so subtract that. Okay. All right, reimbursing C R H A for payment in lieu of taxes made payable to the ci- paid to the city. Of twenty thousand dollars. This just sort of emerged on our radar screen very. In the last week or so, and I don't really know what this refers to.
Mr. Payne, do you know, I think?
Well, yes, it's part of, um, in agreement, I think if my memory is correct, from the nineteen fifties where C R H A. In lieu of taxes to the city. Um, and, you know, they have wanted to be, both be reimbursed for it and, and. Just get rid of that requirement. So I think the first step here would just be a reimbursement for it and then along with. Um, the conversation about a contractual agency, um. Looking at just eliminating that agreement of them having us, give us a payment move taxes. Um, and as an aside, I know it's not, um, vibrant community fund, but the conversation around contractual funding. For C R H A does come with a dollar amount they have in mind. I think of like a hundred thirteen thousand annually, something like that. Um, so I know that's not V C F right now, but keep in mind.
So this payment in lieu of taxes, this would be like for all of their properties? Twenty thousand is, is the amount of tax they pay?
I think it's a calculation based on their rent revenue. It's a HUD calculation.
Right.
That we get every year and I think the basis of it is rent revenue, but Lisa or Sam or somebody else can correct me.
Yeah. I asked Lisa. Lisa, you have.
So for those of you counselors who were on city council, um, when. Uh, the last couple of years when C R H A was seeking approval of all the L L Cs to do the redevelopment. Discussing, um, the plans to address the troubled status as an agency. We did a lot of background research and, um, there's a nineteen fifty-eight agreement. That is entered into under the HUD regulations and because HUD money has been. Um, granted to the housing authority over the years to. There are certain provisions that have to be in agreements and, um. This pilot payment is somehow the result of, of those HUD regulations and all of the various. Um, sort of grant agreements or other arrangements between the housing authority and HUD. Um, pursuant to which they've received funding over the years. So, um. I, I don't, I. I don't know to the extent if any that those arrangements, um. Were or could be modified as a result of. Um, the redevelopment approvals. I'm just not really up to speed and I don't have a full collection of documents, but. Um, um, the long and the short of it is, there is a calculation that's done every year. And in accordance with the established agreements with HUD, C R H A makes this payment to the city every year.
So, so Lisa, uh, it's a separate question whether, uh. Uh, we could eliminate the pilot, which I, it sounds like we, we may not be able to because it's embedded in the HUD. Regulation and whether the city decides to reverse. Or the payment of the power. Those are, those are, those are two separate, uh, separate issues.
I suppose so. I, I don't, I'm sorry, I just, I don't know enough about the HUD housing regulations and, and, um. You know, I, I would imagine that the agreement could be amended, um, but the. Um, the, the primary interest that the federal government has is in making sure that. Um, um. The, uh, public housing units that they funded are not going to be taxed by the city.
What if we created a policy and, I'm sorry, if of saying that. All monies collected by the city as a payment in lieu of taxes. Go back into a fund to assist any residents of public housing. Who have had issues with paying.
Yeah, I think, I think.
Help get that, um.
I would think the, the simplest decision in front of us would just be providing C R H A an amount equivalent. Um, in, you know, having a longer term discussion at another point.
I, I certainly don't want to have a longer term discussion right now. The question. As I, given the choice, if, if, if folks are determined to reimburse them for twenty thousand dollars. I would rather just go ahead and, and make a, an appropriation to the twenty thousand dollars. And figure out the theoretical basis and how it fits into the entire program later on.
I think that would make, I would agree with that for now.
I would, I would support that.
Okay. And then the amount to fully fund drug court and therapeutic docket. And make it a basic a hundred percent fine, funded is, it's about a seventy-five thousand dollar increase at that point.
Mayor, I'm sorry, was twenty thousand the number I should?
Yes.
Plug in, okay.
It's seventy-five, I don't remember exactly what it is, but, um, let's see. It's one. Out here. One thirty-six, four forty-seven. No, wait a minute, that is, that, that's.
I have, I have twenty-seven, eight, nine, two.
Yeah. No, cause we're going to a hundred percent for them. So. It was gonna be to. A hundred eighty-five thousand, basically. Four, four ninety, a hundred eighty-six, four forty-seven, maybe. Minus. I remember a seventy-five and some change beyond that. Let me pull it up from an earlier email.
What, what was it minus some previous allocation or?
We've already, we've already designated.
Oh.
Gonna give them. A hundred and. What's it? My computer is not being cooperative with me right now. Let's see. Okay, what I had. I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong email.
So we're giving a total to O A R for all their programs of three hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars.
And Lloyd, you, your email from earlier in the week, this twenty-seven, eight, two, eight, nine, two. I don't know if that's incorrect.
Twenty-seven, yeah, you're right, you're right. Uh, it was the seventy-five I was adding in was the seventy-five from, um, A H I P. You're, you're correct. Okay. So that gets us through all of our. All the decisions we need to make for the F Y twenty twenty-three budget if I'm.
Nope, we still got schools.
Schools.
Okay, it's a school issue. Okay.
So just a little bit of explanation here, the, the information in blue is basically from. One of the scenarios that we put, um, forward, we, the city manager's office put forward, um, last week. Uh, the black is just trying up here, thinking through some of the options that you all have to consider. Um, one would be to get you to sixty-eight point eight million with, using fifty-four million dollars worth of bonds, which is what's shown below. Sixty-eight point eight million using fifty million dollars worth of bonds. Sixty-eight point eight million with a three-year debt service schedule, so either fifty or fifty-four, but. Spreading that out over three years of an increase to debt service. Sixty-eight point eight with a one-time tax increase at either bond amount. Those were the, the, basically the four school scenarios if you were accepting the sixty-eight eight as the number.
So my propose, my, my view is fifty-four million dollars in bonds only because the. That extra four million dollars in cash, that would be, you know, that you showed on the other, um. Slide. I'm not sure where that other four million dollars in cash would come from and, um. You know, doing fifty-four million dollars in bonds and what, what you've got sketched out with the three years of increased debt service. It seems doable for us, so.
Yeah, and I'm supportive of that, of that as well, cause we can't. Bank on at this point, the expected surplus in December. That's. We have to pretend like that's not there. That's correct.
We do, although I just want to point out that if you, you are counting three point eight of that. To get you to years two and three of your debt service increase. Everything you said, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page there.
Okay.
Yeah, my point is if we do fifty-four versus fifty, that's. Four million dollars in cash that we're not having to go out, you know, shaking the cupboards. Um, I feel like getting from a seventy-five million dollar bonded project to a fifty-four million dollar bonded is, uh. Good.
I, I'm fine with all of the entries online sixty through sixty-six as we're looking at the budget right now.
Was, are some of those?
That's not just schools, that's also P H A and Meadow Creek Trail.
So you've got first year of additional debt service. Cash contribution, that's coming from that other slide. The six hundred thousand, which is for the surplus from the surplus. Yeah. Perfect.
And then the only piece that's missing here, which wouldn't be on our slides. But the only piece that's missing here to get you to the sixty-eight eight is the seven point five million in ARP funds from.
Right.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Assuming that that in fact comes to pass. This looks like a very intelligent way to get to fund the, the project at fifty-four million.
Yeah.
And I would say fifty would be ideal, but I don't know where that four million comes from either, so I'm okay with. The fifty-four scenario here that's laid out this way. The only one, um. You know, I'm, I'm unsure on is the seven hundred thousand for the Meadow Creek Trail. I guess the two questions would be, one. Um, I know there had been a discussion of funding it with ARPA. Would this be in addition to the ARPA money or is this just having it in surplus instead of ARPA? Um, and the second thing is, I'm potentially open to it, but before I feel like I could make a final decision, I would just want to see what we're weighing it against. And allocating either ARPA, um, or the surplus. It's hard for me to make a decision not seeing what else is not chosen. Um, but I'm potentially open to it.
Well, and anything in the surplus, we're actually not making decisions on tonight. This is just, I think, a suggestion that it could come from the surplus.
That's correct.
Right. But.
I would hope we would consider it as more than just a suggestion, with maybe a, an assumption. Uh, still subject to change, but I, I'd rather it were at least to the, the point of. You have to change your mind to not do it.
Yeah, I would agree with that myself. I mean, I, I see it as like, um. A, a solid plan subject to further revision based off new information.
Well, where is it in our park master plan or where is it with our parks and recs department? And their priorities, what's else? I mean, this, I just think this is, again, as we have brought up. Another conversation, if, if we're looking at this being funded through our surplus anyways, this isn't a conversation for tonight, really.
That's true. I mean, I'm, if this is the same one that, um, Ned Mickey has shown me so many times. And I guess it is Lloyd.
Yes.
Um, this has been in the C I P for fifty years or some ridiculous number.
No, I, I, we don't need to get into it, but there's a lot of other things that are in a very similar scenario, um.
Okay.
But just letting you know, my mind is not ma- made up on it. The only other final thing I would just add is. Um, I touched on it briefly, but the C R H A contractual agency. Does have a rough dollar amount associated of about a hundred thirteen thousand dollars a year, um, so I did, I believe that's correct, um. And I skipped over that, but do you wanna, I want to throw it, if we're talking, if there's agreement to move forward with making them a contractual agency, there is a dollar amount associated with it.
Well, I don't understand what it would mean to be a contractual agency in this sense. Cause I don't understand what the hundred and thirteen thousand is supposed to represent.
Yeah, I, I don't know. It's a discussion for another time, but it's basically on a contractual basis, paying them, um. Per each unit they manage, uh, price on a monthly basis. Um, and I think their initial request was like twenty-five dollars a unit on, uh. A monthly basis and then there's three hundred seventy-six units. So when I did the math, I think it's like a hundred thirteen thousand a year. But basically entering into a steady funding stream from the city based on how many properties they're managing.
Okay, that was not what I was considering with a contractual agency, so I think that does need to just, again, be a. Another, that's, that's a lot of information that still needs to be shared on that. To before, I mean, before I feel comfortable making a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollar. Um, decision personally.
Yeah. Well, so we, we don't have to, the only reason I raised the issue is that I. It seemed like from one of the comments earlier, as though somehow there was an assumption that we had support for that. And my, my comment was just, no, not from me, cause I don't even understand it yet, so.
Okay.
Not an issue we have to confront now. Okay, so is there any other decision on, well, first of all, is there any other decision? Uh, on this spreadsheet that we want to change or revisit or? Anything.
Yeah, um, I'm sorry. Oh, I just want to make sure that at this point, I guess it, cause this is a public hearing as well, Lloyd.
Yes.
Yeah, so before we hear from the, the public, if, if staff is crystal clear on. How deliberations to this point with the designations.
I am.
And we do still have to talk about the tax rate.
Right.
Yeah.
You do still have forty-nine thousand dollars and some change left.
With no tax rate increase.
That's right.
And no reduction of the personal property tax rate.
That's right.
That's correct.
Yeah, we don't, we also have those long-term items.
Yeah, so I think this is where the conversation gets really interesting.
Do you want me to walk through these and what the impact might be, or do you want to just go one by one or?
I say go one by one, I think we.
That's fine.
We can't do the lodging taxes here, so, because we never advertised it.
Well, actually, we could advertise that and still do it before it would take effect.
We would just amend the budget later for that tax amount.
I don't know enough about that particular tax to. Counselor Payne, you need, you have any thoughts about it?
Well, I get my, my thoughts, you know, are in part gonna be influenced by where, you know, majority of council aligns, if anywhere. On where to go, um, but. Um, in terms of how I would think of it, I would think, I think they're all. Likely regressive in our local market. I would think real estate is the least regressive because of our relief program, as well as the structure of the tax followed by. Um, lodging and then meals. So that's sort of how I would weigh first preference if we're looking for new revenue.
Yeah, so I'll just go ahead and lay out. When, what I'm. when, what I'm thinking, I don't know enough about the lodging tax, um, maybe I should, but I don't. Personal property tax rate, you know, two millions already baked into that, um, which is great. I, I saw the mayor's email about, you know, if we were to, the relative impact of that tax compared to others seems um lower. It is, I guess, in a sense, a windfall to us. Um, but I can see the, the point of not changing the rate just because of that. And I guess, you know, at some point, car values will go down. Um, so I, you know, I could either keep it at the two million or equalize it to where we only quote make one million. Though I guess someone might say that's ad hoc. Uh, when it comes to the real estate tax, I'm supportive of a one cent tax increase for that. And I realize that seems ridiculous with housing assessments going up, but we can't always depend on housing assessments going up. And um, I think that we need to have some structural changes in terms of um, our revenue so that we can sort of move the city to uh, you, what we've seen tonight is all these other requests that have come in that are good and important requests. And right now, we're operating on a fifty thousand dollar sort of margin. And I just, I think it's time for us to position the city for the future where we've got the money. We need to make these really, you know, as Michael said, larger investments. So I, I would support a one cent tax increase for real estate. Um, with the notion that over the next couple of years, maybe we could add another penny every year or two. Terms of meals tax, uh, I realize that it's more regressive than some other taxes. I don't think any of these are, taxes are unproblematic in some way or another. Um, I would support a half uh percent increase with the meals tax um, for the same reason that I support uh increase with the um, real estate. Because I want to position us in the future so that we're not on these sort of, um, I don't want us to have to rely on the possibility of surpluses or on these kind of really narrow margins. Um, so those are the three for me. I, I'm torn about the personal property tax. Uh, I could either leave it as it is or equalize it for a million dollars extra, so to speak. I support a one cent, a real estate tax increase and a half uh percent um, meals tax.
So if we make, i- if we were to simply take the, the additional half percent for the meals tax and to take the one cent for the real estate tax, that works out to about two point two million dollars. What do you envision doing with the two point two million dollars?
Well, I guess first of all, I mean, the, the positions that we've talked about tonight, the additional things that we've, we've added, that we've kind of cobbled on at the last minute. Uh, I would like us to not have to rely on, you know, this sort of, right now, we're basically skating through this year because of a two million dollar um, helpful uh, windfall, I'll call it that, it's probably not the best term, but for, for vehicles and cars. Well, next year, that may not be there, and I'd like to make a sort of baseline adjustment in the revenue side of the city so that we're not having to face that. Um, I don't know about the possibility of like, you know, to use that old term they used to use about social security, putting it in a lockbox or something. But, you know, Counselor Payne has made some really, I think, eloquent points about funding a CIP that's, you know, five to ten years in the future and thinking, and thinking in that, so. Yeah, I don't know that answers your question, but.
I mean, I, just in terms of what goes into the budget document that we're going to pass next week, which are balanced, the two point two million dollars, does that go into?
It was in the same place that, that nine million was going to go for the ten cent.
But the nine million wasn't allocated.
That's what I'm saying.
But it would have had to have been allocated by next week.
Okay, fair enough.
So the only thing that you've suggested that would be a reduction off the two point two million would be something to reduce the personal property tax rate, let's say by a million dollars, in which case we're adding one point two million dollars that's got to get allocated to something. Now, we might decide to allocate it to an increased contribution uh, to the debt service fund or any of a number of other things uh, that.
That's actually, yeah, thank you, Lord, you're, you're, you're giving me an education. Yeah, I guess what, sort of where my mind had been would be to go ahead and use it, you know. Whatever the number is, we sort of, I think you said five percent, Chrissy, at one point, that we end up putting over into the CIP, some sort of investment like that.
Three percent a year, three percent of our general fund a year.
So Mr. Wade and Ms. McGill are trying to speak. I'll be quiet for a while.
Cena was first.
Well, thank you, sir. Um, so, couple of things. Um, I am not for reducing the personal property tax. One thing, one reason for that is because the local governing body of each county, city, or town shall fix or establish its tangible personal property tax rate for its general class of tangible personal property, which reach also be applied to that portion of the value of each qualifying vehicle that is in excess of twenty thousand dollars. So I am not in favor of lowering the personal property tax. Um, because in a lot of ways, that is, with that there, that makes it one of our more progressive taxes. Um, with the first twenty thousand dollars not being counted. Um, I would like to see a one cent real estate tax, again, being, again, one of our more progressive taxes, even though it is counterintuitive for a lot of us to think of meals taxes as being, we think that the more wealthy you are, the more often you're going to go out to eat. It's actually the opposite. If you're poorer, you're, you're more likely to grab a meal for your kids because you don't have the time. Um, and so I'm just one cent real estate tax that goes straight into a fund solely to support the schools. Um, knowing that we have this large, we, I know we're looking at the surplus, but I don't count my chickens. I just, I just don't, and we know we have a large bill coming due for the schools. One cent going straight to them makes me more comfortable that we will be able to meet that obligation.
Okay, so you're looking to increase the real estate rate by one cent. Were you uh, going with the increased meals tax as well?
No, I am not for an increased meals tax.
Okay, and not for changing the personal property rate?
Correct.
Okay, so you're looking to add basically nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
And again, that going solely for schools and using that to be paying on the, the one, the continued, the work we're looking at right now to proceed this year um, with the design stuff.
Did, did you say anything about lodging? I, I, I.
Um, no, not lodging right now, again.
Oh, yeah, you did mention lodging, yeah.
I mean, the, what I mentioned with lodging earlier was this, we haven't advertised it, so I was saying we, there's no point in even considering it, but if we could re-advertise it before the end of the year, I, I don't see the as we found with COVID and as we are looking at COVID and, you know, we're realizing that things like lodging taxes are mutable, that we, they're just, we're up and down. Um, and so I have concerns about tying needed projects to a funding stream that could fluctuate.
Mr. Mayor, Todd Diver has had his hand up.
Okay, Todd, fire away. Sorry, I've got it on a, a thing where I can't see everybody else.
That's okay. I just, I just wanted to clarify, I, I think Counselor McGill was referring to um, the fact that personal property tax relief is applied to the first twenty thousand dollars of value on vehicles, right?
Yes.
Um, I, I, I feel like I need to point out, that is a fixed pot of money that we get from the state. Um, and that pot of money is going to go farther um, if the rate is lower. Um, if that makes sense. I mean, I hope that makes sense, but, um, you know, that's one of the, when you guys get done setting the rate, the first thing I'm going to do is set the personal property tax rate. If um, if the ta- if the tax rate, excuse me, the personal property tax relief rate, if the tax rate is higher, um, that rate is going to be lower. Um, I just wanted to point that out.
So I, ano- another way to put that is every year we get three point four million and some change from the state. And it is up to us to divvy that out to every uh, applicable vehicle. So it, that doesn't change. So I think, um, you know, if the assessment goes up and we lower the rates, then the tax bill is lower, but the amount of relief is still the same. So if the tax bill goes up, it's not really, and you're really not getting a tax credit on twenty thousand. It's something less than twenty thousand, because our relief doesn't change.
Yeah, thank you, Chrissy, that's a much better way to say it.
And just one other point I want to point out, not to skip around, but just as you think about this, keep in mind, if you um, choose to raise the real estate tax rate um, in this year, you'll get money in this first column B, but you're also going to get additional money in column D because we're going to get the first half of that payment in June.
I got you. So we would get four hundred and sixty thousand dollars more in June, thereby adding to our uh FY twenty twenty-two budget surplus by four hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Right, Vice Mayor Wade, or you've got your hand up, are you?
Yeah, I was gonna wait for Cena to, to, to finish, and then I'm gonna, it looks like she's done, she's um, got her Michael mute, so, so um, I'm in the camp of raising the real estate tax um, one cent. Um, but I'm just wondering that if we get the legislation next year to, you know, get the um, authority to put a referendum for um, that tax to be used for schools, that if we might get some type of backlash, you know, um, for this. But that's just a thought, but I would be in support of that of one cent and that, that money can go um, to the schools. I know that um, Mr. Payne mentioned that, you know, we could, it could go to a pool for CIP, but it just would be, you know, money that we, that's available, that we could, you know, um, put in different pots. One pot could be schools, one pot could be CIP. But um, I think that we know the walkers out there and that I don't want to be caught like we are now with Buford. Um, and so I wanted to start creating funds to, um, for that, so um, that's what I will have to say about that. Um, for the um, lodging, um, one thing that um, Mr. Payne said as one, because I'm still learning about this. He said that that is re- regressive as well and, and um, if, you know, maybe Mr. Payne or someone can enlighten me on how lodging is, is regressive. You know, I understand how meals tax is, but how is um, it's been a while since I've done some planning type classes.
I don't know much specific data on like um, how it lines up. I would just think because it's like a tax that the consumer is paying, that, you know, it would tend to be regressive. But I, I don't know what like data would be or how it would um, pair up compared to other sources.
Yeah, it doesn't look like we, we have su- support for that, but that would be something that maybe at some point in the future, if we decide to do that, that I would be, you know, that I would be something that I will look like, because, look at, because I know that, that is, you know, wherever, you know, that is. We have hotels here that's definitely has visitors that use it. So at, at some point in the future, I'm, I may be supportive of that. As far as the meal tax, I'd be supportive of a half a cent. Um, for the personal property, um, I would like, you know, that I would be in support of that to be equalized to um, one million dollars um, and uh, so um, I think that somehow we could make it half, you know, the increase in half. And I didn't work out the rate, but that's.
Uh, if you wanted to increase it by point four percent, that would get you about a million dollars. So to go to six point four percent.
Okay.
So my personal property tax?
No, we're talking about meals tax.
Oh.
No, he's, he switched conversations.
I'm sorry, did I miss something there?
I'm sorry.
I apologize.
No, mi- meals tax, yeah, half a cent.
Okay.
That I will be supportive of that, and for personal property, is I understand it, it's an increase of about two million dollars for, for those and, and um, not to equalize, but half equal, you know, um, you know, make it um, increase of about a million dollars.
Okay. Michael?
Well, as I said, you know, I would say um, you know, raising the real estate tax uh, by three cents and just getting it over with, um, and recognizing that's, that's paired with the only relief program we have for any tax source um, would be the preferred route I would go. Um, if others, if, if I'm alone on that, um, then, you know, I would be open to one cent on the real estate tax and half cent on the meals tax. Um, with at least, I think our commitment should be if a sales tax passes the General Assembly, that we should bring that back down, um, given the impact on the consumer would be the same. Um, and I would say put all that money into our um, our CIP budget. Um, and I think the reason, you know, it's going to be needed and we should get it over with now is we've got not only the Walker phase, we've got West Haven scattered site, um, future phases of redevelopment of public housing, um, other housing infrastructure needs. I think it's, you know, we've acknowledged our tax rate is lower than a lot of other pure localities, both for the meals tax and the real estate tax. Um, and I think we should just get it over with now and be making a down payment on being able to afford what we've said we're committed to, but haven't yet planned to fund.
So, three cents or three cents on the real estate rate or one cent on the real estate rate and a half percent on the meals tax, is that correct?
Correct, if I'm alone on that opinion on the real estate tax.
And no change on personal property?
Uh, yes, no adjustment there. I think we would just basically be shopping around where money comes from without a practical difference, so I'm not.
And, and no change on the, on the lodging tax?
Uh, at, at this point now, so probably this budget cycle, no.
Okay, all right, well.
Vice Mayor, I'd like, if I could, like, to revise my point about the personal property tax. I, I'm favored just leaving it as it is.
Okay.
For the reasons that, that Mr. Payne just enunciated.
Okay. All right, so my, my basic problem with the, and I, I've said from the beginning that if you look at sort of historic levels uh, or comparing across jurisdictions, Charlottesville has a lower real estate tax rate than basically any other comparable city. The reason we've been able to get away with that is because the revenue sharing agreement, that basically adds about fifteen cents worth of real estate, or worth of revenue. Uh, and if it wasn't for that, we would have to be at about a dollar ten, which would put us pretty much back in the middle of, of other comparable cities. Um, meals tax, as I've said before, uh, virtually all of the cities in Charle- in Virginia are either six or six point five percent. Uh, and so going from point zero to six point five percent still keeps us pretty much around the, the mode or in, in the median range. I am not, uh, I've said before, I, I think with personal property tax rates and also with real estate tax rates, there is a virtue in not trying to tweak it year upon year upon year. there is a virtue in not trying to tweak it year upon year upon year, depending on how the money happens to be flowing in a particular year. We've been at four, four dollars and twenty cents per, per hundred dollars evaluation for good long while, and I think we ought to leave it there. So, and I'm not, I'm not a fan of changing the lodging tax. My basic problem with increasing tax revenues at a time when, as I look at the chart that's up on the screen, we're still in positive territory, both for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three and for the projected fiscal year twenty twenty-two surplus. My basic problem is that I, 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 I think it is a hard sell to tell voters, we're gonna charge you money that we don't actually need this year. We may need it next year, but we want it this year and we're gonna stick in the bank. And I think that's a hard thing to say to people, particularly when we've already hit them with eleven percent raise uh, in their, in their real estate assessments. I'll tell you, I also think realistically that we should figure that the real estate assessments next year are going to be up by a comparable amount for two reasons. Number one, because what I've seen of the real estate market so far in twenty twenty-two is that it hadn't slackened any since twenty twenty-one, number one. Number two, we typically reassess essentially half of the city every year. So last year we reassessed half of the city and some of those folks got as much as a twenty or twenty-five percent bump. And that, this coming year, the other half of the city will get a little bit more attention. So I think we're likely be in the same position next year. That however, is one of those things that while it's sort of a, a thing to think about in the future, I completely would, would say that's, that's really, that's not just counting your chickens before they're hatched. That's counting your chickens before you've even bought them. So that, that's a little far out there, but I think we, we don't have to be overly pessimistic about, about all of that. So the, the question becomes, so what are we doing? How do, how would an, an extra nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars on a real estate tax uh, this year? How would that help us uh, say three years from now? Now, what I can, or I've been thinking about is, well, okay, we could put that money toward the debt service fund, because among the charts that Ms. Hamel has given us over the last few months are a series of charts that show how the debt service fund eventually gets down to even negative territory by you know, let's say five, six years from now. And that's, that's certainly a place that something could be put. The other possibility I suppose would be for us to decide that we're going to increase the amount that we put into the capital fund from three percent to four percent or three and a half percent, let's say three and a half percent would work out to roughly a million dollars a year. And that would be roughly the same amount as, as in the real, that would, would come with a one, a one cent real estate tax increase. And then the question would be, well, okay, if we put that money in there, what would we be spending the money on now? Uh, and how are we gonna translate that into a savings a year from now, two years from now, three years from now? Maybe there's some projects that we were planning on doing two or three years from now that could be accelerated into this year if we had more money in the capital budget this year. I don't know. I have a, a hard time thinking about that and I don't know whether Ms. Hamel or somebody else has any, any thoughts on if we had an extra million or two million dollars a year that we were trying to save for a capital need a couple of years down the road? What's the best way to do that? Ms. Hamel, any suggestions?
You know, I think you just set it aside. It becomes, and it sits in a reserve account. In, in the way we think about it, we would just plop that into the CIP contingency fund. Um, and it would sit there until council was ready to allocate that to some type of expense. That's one way to do it. The other way to do it would be, as you suggested, to transfer that to the debt service fund. It would become part of the debt service fund balance. And in those tables, as we work through next year, um, as we're working through debt and the CIP, that would just increase the amount of time that we are extra dollars that we can use to buy down the annual increases. Those would be two ways that I would think of.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Well, yeah, it's sort of, um, both of them have the feeling of we're taking the money from the voters and we're putting it in our bank account and not theirs.
And I think the problem is if, you know, if we're gonna be committed to future phases of public housing redevelopment, the improvements at Walker, you know, even moving towards thirty minute, you know, transit system, which we have a beginning of a fund for, but not all the way there yet. What's our realistic plan to actually get there if we're gonna make that commitment? And how do we prevent it from being another one of the long history of items that ended up in a um, future out year and we didn't worry about it and in practice, we never get to it. So I, when, when I look at the state of you know, our CIP budget combined with our unfunded commitments, I just think it would behoove us to start now if we're serious about positioning ourselves to make those commitments when the time comes. You know, the cost for West Haven is uh, you know, total cost of a hundred fifty million dollars. Are we gonna be serious about what it takes to get there, you know, even if only a fraction of that comes from the city? So that's, you know, that, that's why I think it is, it does make good sense for us to put that into our um, debt service fund and just position ourselves to getting ready to make those commitments when the time comes.
Yeah, yeah. And it just quickly to add on to that, that it, you know, if we had just done partially this, some of this in the past, tonight, instead of making that decision of fifty-four million dollars, instead of fifty million dollars, we would have had maybe, maybe a pool of money or something like that we could have pulled from. I just think we need to start, you know, you know, I like to use the term squirreling it away now and, and we have a lot of initiatives that we want to do over, you know, many years, many, many years. And, and unfortunately, it doesn't come for free. I understand what you're saying, Lloyd, and I've, we've received a lot of comments, both emails um, and, you know, as we're just out in the public and I, I value those. And that's why I'm being very judicious and, and at this point, you know, having one cent, so.
Yeah, and I guess, you know, I, I echo those. I, I think using it, maybe I'm not. I, I guess I would, my propos- my preferred option would be what Ms. Hamel discussed in terms of using it to go ahead and pay down the debt service and sort of get ahead of that, as we know, we have larger projects coming. I don't, I don't think we're really talking about just sort of socking it away in a rainy day fund. We're talking about going ahead and using this money to help us be proactive as we manage our CIP going forward. It's kind of how I, I see it.
Or to fund that four million cash contribution to the schools that we need.
Uh, unless, yeah, unless some other four.
But that's already in there. It's already in the budget.
Yeah, for this year.
This part for this year is, but it doesn't mean we can, we only have to fund that this year. We instead, we could fund it with, this could be the line item, funding that.
Well, I mean, if we're doing the fifty-four million dollar bond thing, I don't think we have to come up with that extra four hundred, four million in cash. We'd, we'd be taking care of it through the bonds, as I understand what. But still, to your point, I mean, if, to me, if we're using this extra money to go ahead and get ahead of the debt service payments that we think we're gonna end up having to do in the next years. And the other thing I look at, a mayor, you know, we're already like banking on a surplus right now. When I look at this chart, we've already like, in true, a lot of the things that are in the column down below, you know, the, the cells down below there, maybe we don't have to do, but we're, we're already kind of thinking that we need, as I look at this, that we need to really do the things that we're saying as a city, that um, we need that extra certain need, you know, like need is a relative term, but at least through the purposes of this discussion, we've gotten to a point where we've spent down a, a surplus of twelve million down to six hundred and seventy thousand, so. I mean, I understand your point, Mr. Mayor, and I think it's a really good point, particularly in the face of rising assessments, but I, I just, I think that we need to begin thinking about long-term in, housing assessments aren't always gonna go up.
Well, anyway, to sort of finish my thought on, on everything, I be largely because we have just increased uh, taxes by eleven percent on, on residences. Uh, I, I would not support initially a real estate tax increase at all. I can count the votes and I know that uh, there are three votes uh, for one cent and a fourth vote for one cent uh, from Michael, uh, if, if that's the way things are going. And that gets us also to uh, three votes in favor of the one and a half percent, over the half percent meals tax. I'm actually more in favor of the meals tax increase than the real estate tax increase. Uh, so we, we definitely have majority support behind one percent, uh, probably behind one cent on the real estate tax rate and point five percent on the meals tax rate. And have I fairl- and, and no real support uh, for either change in the personal property or change in the lodging tax? Have I fairly summarized where everybody is on this?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm sorry, just for clarification, what did you say about the personal property tax?
Uh, that although you were advocating cutting the personal property taxes by a million dollars, there are four votes to the contrary. So.
I just have two other questions for you as you consider that increase. So one would be if you're gonna do the one cent and put that towards debt service, are you not gonna include that piece as part of the school formula, number one? And number two, there's probably some portion of that penny that we need to um, increase the tax relief. And Todd, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we had um, run some numbers on a two cent increase and that was about a half a million dollars. Was that, am I in the ballpark?
That sounds right. Yep.
The two million dollars is, is the amount of tax relief? Or no, what's the two million?
A half a million, um, a half, five hundred thousand additional would be needed for tax for a two cent tax increase. So, I mean, just doing some really rough math. I don't wanna put Todd on the spot, but I'm thinking if you do a penny, we're probably looking at two, two hundred and fifty thousand additional for tax.
Yeah, we need some more money for tax relief, if the tax rate, you know.
Okay. So that would net us roughly six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars after we take out two hundred and fifty.
And then you'd have to make some determination on what you wanna do in terms of the school formula on that.
Well, I, I look at it this way, if we're going to uh, keep with giving them forty percent, then we also ought to be able to say, well, in that case, you don't need an extra four point two million from us. You only need an extra three point eight million to balance what they, what they say they need. Other words, they, they have a, a sort of a right, in a sense, to expect their forty percent. They said in addition to the forty percent that we have tabulated, we also want four point two million dollars. If we're, as a result of the forty percent, giving them another three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, then in theory, they ought to need only another three point eight million dollars to balance what they need to balance.
I think that's a fair point. I mean, it's, it's a challenge. The reason we're trying to erase revenue is, in my mind, is to invest in long-term capital projects, which I think will benefit schoolchildren for decades. And I understand the need every year for the operational costs to be funded. But, you know, it, it gets to be very hard to try to raise the money for the capital investments when right off the bat forty percent is going to, I guess, what I would call operational expenses. So I would support what the mayor just suggested.
I had one other question. Is, is the forty percent only as to real estate or does also include personal property taxes?
It's both, personal property and real estate.
So when we get two million dollars more in personal property taxes, they're gonna get eight hundred thousand dollars more.
Well, that's an interesting question. Um, we had, that's not calculated in, to be honest. Because the budget is based, first of all, we fully funded their ask. Um, and the budget assumes that, which, which is more than the forty percent formula for this year.
Right.
Um, and so we have, for purposes of this calculation, we put the entire two million in um, the column to be used on the city side. But that would be up to council.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a, I'm sorry.
That, that, that is a decision, because remember that the forty percent, yeah, it exists because council adopts a set of financial rules every year, including proposed in this budget that uh, allocates forty percent of, of, of new revenue to the schools. So that's a choice the council can make. But it has been a long, I guess, a longstanding tradition that is not statutory that I can find.
Right.
Or, or not by, by any, any written agreement, but there has been a policy that has been followed by council. So, you know, in, in, in fact, say it that way, Chris, it's what we've just done in terms of this column here, we need to recalculate because uh, uh, all of the uh, the increase is not ours.
Well, the other way, but the other way to look at it is if we've increased taxes by two point nine million dollars and we're giving them four percent of it, then that's effectively one million, hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so we ought to be able to reduce the amount that we give to them outside of the four percent, of the forty percent. We ought to be able to reduce that by a comparable amount, in which case, instead of four point two million dollars, we're giving them basically three million dollars. That gets them to the exact same spot that they would be in if we didn't raise taxes a nickel.
I would concur with the mayor.
As would I.
So uh, if we, and I, what I'm hearing is that we have a, certainly a majority vote for the one per- the one cent real estate uh, tax increase, majority vote for a point five percent meals tax increase that uh, there is not support, not a majority vote for the, any change in the personal property, not a majority vote for change in any lodging taxes. And so that would effectively give us, and, and that we would also then reduce the, the four point two million we would give to the schools to whatever the same amount is, with three point three million and then change, basically. I think it's about three million, maybe fifty thousand or something or forty thousand. That would, that would get them to the same spot they were at. That would allow us to basically do the same, all of the calculations that we've got on this spreadsheet would remain the same. And the quest, and then the question is, okay, if we're expecting another one point two five, is it's gonna be about almost two point two million dollars? Are we thinking that we want to put that towards uh, the debt service fund at this point? Because that would seem to be, I mean, Chris, you, you mentioned debt service or a capital uh, contingency plan, uh, contingency fund. Either way, it ends up getting, getting uh, allocated in one way or another toward the capital improvements that we know we're gonna be making, the largest one of which, of course, is the school.
That's correct. And you can, you know, even if you put in the capital contingency account, it's a little bit easier for us to look at that every year. Um, and that always has to come back to council before it gets spent. So even if we put it in the CIP contingency and then you guys decide, hey, I wanna put this in the debt service, you could do that as well. Um, or if there's a cash funded project that you wanted to use that for, you could do that.
Okay.
I would like that.
Yeah, I would like within your numbers, can we still make a plea for the two fifty extra for tax relief? Please, if you're gonna raise a real estate tax.
I am a hundred percent in agreement with that.
Yes.
Okay, I guess I'm in agreement with it too. I just I'm wondering, I thought we already had like, there was another two million dollars that Mr. Diver said. Added to the the baseline budget to to help. I guess that was just to cover rising assessments. Maybe that's what that was for. Okay.
That that's correct.
Okay.
I mean, that and, you know, we're we're trying to do some things to to merge. Recall, we're trying to do some things to merge real estate tax relief and CHAP. And so that's, you know, part of that, but, you know, whenever, you know, whenever the rate goes up. You know, you're gonna end up giving giving out more relief money.
Understood. I'm supportive of that.
Yeah. And Mr. Mr. Mayor, are we, is there agreement then that the raised from from these actions will go to? The CIP contingency? That as this. It's Chrissy bow that gives gives you flexibility, it gives us flexibility to demonstrate it before. Before various projects come up.
You folks agree on that?
Yes, because fundamentally, that's going to be going to the schools or affordable housing or, yeah.
Yes.
Yes. Michael?
Yep.
Okay. Sounds like a plan. Any other questions from the staff about what we've tried to do tonight?
I think we've recorded it all.
Okay. Well, Hamon, would you mind, is it possible to get like a cleaned up version of all this once, just just so the we could ponder it?
Absolutely. I just, I need to. I was not, I'm not clear on the math of of what we just did. So. Mayor, do you have that? Can you send it to me and I'll incorporate it here? Or do we want to go through that quickly? So a penny would be roughly nine twenty five. Right?
Yeah.
Okay, and then what was the, you're gonna do the meals?
Right, one point two five million is the estimate.
Okay.
You got a hundred twenty five thousand there, need another zero.
Okay. Then we're gonna do.
Give.
We're gonna do two two fifty for tax relief.
Okay.
Okay. And is that it?
Well.
Is there something we needed to do on the school side?
Yeah, we're because we're increasing our taxes by roughly. One about two point, let's see, two million, about two point nine two. Five million. They get forty percent more of that.
They're gonna get forty percent more of these two?
No, no, they'll get forty percent more of the ninety two five. And forty two, or nine hundred and twenty five, pardon me, and they'll get forty percent of the two million dollars more in personal property taxes.
Okay.
So I don't think that was part of the initial calculation. I think the initial calculation involved a lower tax. Well, actually, that's probably a good question we should be asking before we finalize this, is what was in fact the expectation? When when we worked out the four point two million that we were going to give them in addition to the forty percent. What was the understanding behind the forty percent? Was that based on the full? Assessments of their used car rates? Was that based on last year's? I I my sense is that we got that forty percent or we got the the forty percent figure. Before we knew that that car prices had gone through the roof. It must have been.
Well, we just calculated the forty percent. So the forty percent is based on the revenue growth, not the assessment. So the calculation was based, it was forty percent of the increase on real estate revenue and personal property revenue. Which I'm pulling these numbers off the top of my head, but I think. Excuse me, I think that was roughly about three point. Seven ish million. And then there was dollars added. So I think on the school side, they looked at the increase on the contractual contracts. Which also happened to be very close to coincidentally to roughly what the forty percent amount would have been for twenty. Two that they didn't get because they used cares money. So I think by the time we did that math, it was about forty thousand dollars difference, and so it wasn't worth. The math, we just fully funded their request at the four point two.
And so I get because that was four point two on top of an estimated. Amount of revenue that was itself based on a four on forty percent times the increase in valuations.
Well, it was count, it was forty percent counted on the revenue and we assumed that you were going to equalize the rate. So to your point, we didn't count forty percent on this new two million. I agree with you there.
Okay, so forty percent on the new two million is eight hundred thousand dollars. And you've got three hundred and seventy thousand dollars there. Actually, I would have thought it would be.
Forty percent of nine twenty five, is that right?
Right. So we've got. One point one seven million dollars more in tax revenue coming to them forty percent more. So we ought to be able to reduce the four point two million by one point one seven million. To be basically be three million and thirty thousand dollars. And they would be in exactly the same position. That would be would be the case. You know, if if we were not raising any rates tonight.
Doesn't part of the meals tax get designated to some place in particular?
So a little piece of it goes to the to the mall.
One percent of it goes to our debt service fund. I mean, sorry, the equivalent of one percent of the total meals tax revenue. Gets allocated to the debt service fund.
So that would mean another twelve thousand dollars, basically.
And isn't, I thought there was a percentage that goes to the visitors bureau or something.
That's lodging.
Isn't there something that goes to maintenance of the mall?
Those are the cafe permit fees.
Okay. Which we have been charging. Okay. So there may be a few things to clean up, but I. Is staff comfortable with with where we are at this point? What I was thinking is why don't we have public comment if there is anybody in the public who wants to comment? In the meantime, you all can be thinking about whether there's any, whether we've committed any more stupidities than we've identified. Should we go to see if anybody in the public wants to comment? Okay. Mr. Dylan Hunt, you want to see what we got?
Yes, Mayor Snook, our first raised hand is Bill Emery. Bill, you are on with counsel.
Good evening, counsel. Thanks for all the hard work. I had three things. On the trees, you know, there's a hundred thousand the CIP for moving trees, seventy five thousand for planning. Looks like you guys have increased the funding for planning to a hundred. Thank you. You know, it's important to consider the return on investment. Derived from trees. Imagine the impact on city revenues. There was no shade on the downtown mall. Planning trees makes money for the city. And provides provides numerous other benefits to residents. Then. On a question that's sort of more deeply embedded maps. You know, I'm unable to find a map in the HR and A materials. Showing where the sixteen thousand units where the. Forty million dollars of affordable housing is located. We should know where these community assets are located. Please ask the consultants for a map in advance of the. April twentieth delivery of the HR and A assessment. Maps help us know where we're going. It's crazy not to know where your assets are. Then on the small area plans as part of the FY twenty three CIP. Small area plans will receive inadequate amount, a hundred thousand dollars. In August of nineteen eighty eight, thirty four years ago. Lloyd, you were on the planning commission at the time, I think.
Yep.
The Will and Mills neighborhood came before council and asked for a small area plan. The city's organizational values are listed. On page three of the budget plan that's before you and I. The values are leadership, trust, respect. Excellence and creativity. Which of these values do you see fulfilled in the thirty four years? Of kicking the can down the road on the Will and Mills small area plan request? The concern is timely. Small area planning process is intended to. With full engagement of the public, elected and appointed officials. And planning professionals, it's intended to guide and shape the zoning. That's currently being formulated for the Will and Mills. Specifically, I'm concerned about the zoning induced loss. Of existable for existing affordable housing on Chesapeake Street. Between Mead Avenue and Fairway. And I'm concerned about the high intensity development. Twenty eight acres between Market Street and the railroad tracks. Zoning is being crafted for these areas without the benefit. Of the small area plan requested in nineteen eighty eight. Small area plan process must be funded and concluded before the zoning happens. And this isn't only an issue in the Will and Mills neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Emery.
Next up is Maddie Green. Maddie, you're on with counsel.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, I'm councillor as a mayor. Thank you for your time. My name is Maddie Green. I'm a homeowner in Charlottesville for the last eleven years. I appreciate the commitment to reimburse CRHA for the pilot agreement with the city. I would also be remiss not to remind you that UVA doesn't pay a single dollar of tax money to Charlottesville, which would be a massive revenue. And as a board member of CRHA, I would like to remind you that CRHA. Has three hundred and seventy six housing units of public housing and at the end of last year had five hundred. And fifty three vouchers used in our community. That's over nine hundred families that earn very low wages. That were able to remain in our community because of CRHA's housing and services. And as a social worker, I can tell you that your emphasis. On homeless navigators is unfortunately frankly funding a dead end at the moment because no navigator in the city or the haven. Can find housing that doesn't exist. CRHA is the only provider of this deeply affordable housing. However, we all know that it's crumbling apart around our residents. In order for it to exist in the future, it must be redeveloped, and that is why I would like to recommend a line item commitment. To fund the redevelopment of public housing as councillor Payne has been advocating for. Additionally, I would support the commitment of the ten million dollar for the affordable housing plan and increasing the C-SRAP payment standard. Which Click has spoken with you about before. As for the revenue, I support the increase of the real estate tax. We really need to build up and save these revenues. In order to create the safety social net that you all have paid lip service to. It will improve our education, housing equity and mental health crisis response, not fully funding these initiatives. And by claiming that we are cash strapped is simply scapegoating that we are unwilling to help those in our community. It is shameful to wash our hands of the responsibility. For those members in our community that have need there, but for the grace of God go I. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ms. Green.
Next up is Vicky Bravo. Vicky, you're on with counsel.
Good evening. My name is Vicky Bravo and I'm a resident of Charlottesville. Thank you all for serving the city of Charlottesville. I am representing Impact and we have spoken with most of you over the past weeks and years. We are a group of twenty eight faith congregations. Who work to find solutions to important community problems. We have been working on affordable housing for several years. And we appreciate your commitment to providing affordable housing. And all you have done in this area, including the new housing policy. Over six thousand six hundred households in our community. Were paying over fifty percent of their income for housing. Before the pandemic and the situation has only worsened. It should be possible for hardworking people to afford housing. And still have enough money for basics like groceries and gas and childcare. The only way to solve the problem in the long term is to build more affordable housing. We urge you to put three million dollars per year in the CAF. For developers and nonprofits to build new affordable housing. Three million dollars annually will build about a hundred units. So that in ten years, there will be about a thousand new affordable units. Everyone should have the opportunity to live in a safe, decent, affordable home. Stable housing is the foundation for success. In school, at work, and in all the opportunities Charlottesville has to offer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bravo.
A reminder to those wishing to speak, you may press the raise hand icon within Zoom or star nine if you're joining by phone. Next up, we have Brad Slocum. Brad, you're on with counsel.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, thank you. My name is Brad Slocum. I'm a resident of Stanton, but I commute to work during the week into Charlottesville and participate there regularly in the community. I'd like to address a few different topics from tonight's work session. I I do have to say that. Listening and watching the nickel and diming of community organizations, even though as I understand it's additional funding to what was already improved. Approved, it is just really hard to watch when there's other parts of the budget that don't seem to get nearly the same level of scrutiny and and just to highlight previous comments I've made before. Taking the three hundred twenty five thousand dollars for the Public Works Engineering Project Managers. The under fifty thousand dollars for climate action planning and the a hundred seventy five thousand dollars. For affordable housing, by my math, if I had those numbers right from a few hours ago, that's six hundred fifty thousand dollars. Which is right in line with the average over budget of the police for the last four years. So. Just gonna say if you are struggling to figure out where to come up with the additional funding for these. You know, less specific programs, it's right there in front of you. The other thing I'm gonna say on the the trees, I agree that, you know, examining what the twenty five thousand additional dollars for. Where that's going is understandable, but given that they're the only scalable. Intracity carbon removal technology we have, this should be a no brainer of an expenditure. Atmospheric carbon dioxide has been shown by scientific studies to reduce brain development. In maturing humans and impairmental function in mature humans. And so if we're consistently losing trees annually, as the tree commission has pointed out, and we're not allocating funding for replacing them. We're literally losing our ability to think clearly. Finally, Lloyd, you specifically said, you know, what if we're gonna allocate a tax increase? You know, what possible things could we be spending that money on? I have some recommendations. Distributed power generation and energy storage on all public buildings. Hardening public infrastructure against extreme weather. With HVAC systems that conserve public employees and members of the community during extreme weather events. Actual water management for the streets so they don't flood during rainstorms, such as when. Water would get up to Minis and I'm six four on Harmon Street near the university stadium. Money could go towards assisting residents more directly with renovations and weatherization for the extreme weather that's coming. I just, I could go on, but my time's running out. The anticipated costs that are coming from climate change are going to be exorbitant. We need these tax increases to deal with what's coming. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slocum.
Our next speaker is Louis Mittler. Louis, you're on with counsel.
Yes, good evening. I'm Louis Mittler. I moved to Charlottesville. In nineteen eighty six, I own a home in Meadowbrook Heights. I live on a fixed income. And slowly my house is becoming unaffordable. Partly due to the taxation. Which is skyrocketing. I'm worried that I might not be able to keep my. Um, I'm worried that, um, I might not be able to keep my home largely for that reason. I have tried to apply for relief. My income does qualify, but I was told that I'd saved too much money and, um, to qualify on the basis of assets. And, um, I think there are many seniors that have had to move from their homes that have already, that they were already paid for because of the rising real estate taxes. So I request that you relax the asset requirement for seniors to receive real estate tax relief. And I do join my Impact colleagues in requesting that you put up um, three million dollars in the CH, CAHF for new development of affordable housing. So that seniors who have worked hard will have affordable options in Charlottesville. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mittler.
Mayor Snook, I see no additional hands.
All right.
Actually, my apologies, Greg Weaver just now raised his hand.
Okay.
Greg, you are on with counsel.
Hey, City Council, this is Weaver and Thomas Crabb. Um, I just want to thank you for, for your hard work, um, obviously, you know, based on past comments, you wouldn't be surprised that I'm excited about the money going, um, towards transit. Um, I just want to first, um, sorry, Siri thinks I'm talking to her, um. Um, first, I want to second everything that Brad, uh, Slocum, uh, mentioned earlier very eloquently, um, but also, um, I think, uh, Mayor, Mayor Snook, um, when you, when you're allocating money um, towards these projects and you actually get them done, um, you know, I, I know you're worried about voters and the tax increases, but you know, when they see the benefits of all the hard work you put in, I think it's really gonna pay off. Um, and in addition to all the projects that Brad mentioned, um, you know, I want to, want to second Michael. Um, in, like, you know, there's so much more work to be done with transit expansion and you know, beyond transit expansion, making Charlottesville a more walkable, bikeable city. Um, there are plenty ways that the money can be spent that'll make tangible differences in, in everyday folks' lives, so um, again, thanks for your work and, um, talk to you later.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver.
Anybody else, Mr. Dylan Hunt?
Yes, Benjamin Heller, you are on with counsel.
Uh, hi, counsel, thanks for your, all your hard work on what is really a hard problem and, and really grappling with, uh, so many multifarious issues. I wanted to point out one long-range issue that concerns me, which is that you've got one project that's gonna eat a really huge portion of the CIP and crowd out, I think, a lot of meritorious projects, and that's Buford, and my concern is that, um, there hasn't been enough drilling down into VMDO's estimates. Seventy-five million dollar project is, uh, seventy-five thousand dollars, a student station, that's uh, over twice as much as what is typical in Virginia for new build, let alone renovation. Uh, I know Florida has a benchmark of twenty-seven thousand dollars a student station. It's six hundred dollars a square foot, that's almost as much as, uh, A-grade, high-rise office space. So, uh, I'm by no means an expert in school construction, but just a, a lot of these numbers are kind of puzzling, uh, don't pass the smell test. I know that grade realignment may be part of it. There's, uh, been a certain amount of academic work on the question of grade alignment, and I think the consensus is that it makes almost no difference. So if that's a big, on student outcome, so if that's a big part of the cost, I would really urge you to go back a- and look at the necessity of that and really drill down on those cost estimates, because I know it's an important project, no Buford is falling apart, but seventy-five thousand dollars a student station really just doesn't make sense to me as, as a, a realistic number, thanks.
Thank you.
There are no additional hands.
All right, well, we've had one no additional hand comment and we, I guess, uh, are to the end of things, so let's, let's end the public comment phase at this point. Let me just ask staff, any new questions that you've come up where you say, I'm not sure what the heck they were just deciding?
No.
Think you understand?
Uh, uh, we, we understand it, I mean,
All right.
I think it's pretty clear and, uh, we will, uh, the plan now is to complete the appropriation ordinance uh, working with, uh, Ms. Hamel and, uh, Ms. Robertson and to circulate that for your review before the meeting so that you, uh, have a chance to, to work, work through it. And, uh, uh, Ms. Hamel, we can do a, do a summary kind of as, 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 as a, uh, checkoff sheet to make sure that we've covered uh, covered everything for them, so they can have a clear guide what, uh, what was decided, make sure that we didn't miss anything, right?
Okay.
And, 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 and on, on, uh, if we are able to do that, then on, uh, the day of the vote, since you have planning commission meeting right after, should take ten minutes, Mr. Mayor.
Well, and let me, just before we get off, I should ask, do any councillors have any additional thoughts following the public comments that we've received? I mean, frankly, they're comments we've heard before for the most part, I don't know, but obviously there might be something in there that, that somebody feels strongly about that rang a rang a note with you. Any new thoughts?
The comment, um, I forgot the gentleman, the little Meadowbrook Heights Road, I, I don't, I don't think we have any leadway and um, the guidelines that he, he spoke of.
God has been working on something on that, and we've been trying to, to merge them together that would alleviate some of that problem.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, one of the things that we're gonna try to do is eliminate the, um, the asset requirement altogether to make it match the CHAP program. Um, typically, when we have folks in Mr. Mittler's, I think his name was Mr. Mittler's, um, case,
Mittler.
If they don't qualify uh, for real estate tax relief under the elderly and disabled program, we try to refer them to the CHAP program, but as you know, there is a home value limitation on the CHAP program. And so that may be what's going on here.
Yeah.
But, you know, if we can tweak the program when we want to, we may be able to find a place for it.
Yeah. All right, so, anything further, people?
If not. I'd like to thank staff and my colleagues for all the good work since January, when I came on board and I know not everything is ideal, but I feel like we're heading in a good place and I really appreciate all the good faith work on everyone's part. Thank you.
Likewise.
And I would add that particularly when Ms. Hamel is doing sort of a one-man show over there, it's a two-man show instead of a three-man show, the last couple of years, we were used to seeing you and Ryan both as the tag team. And this year, we only get you, and I know you've been working real hard and I appreciate it.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you all, folks. Nothing further to be done, we're adjourned. See you Tuesday.